Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 22, 2013, meeting of the Edina City Council and the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Roll call, please, Ms. Mangan.
Member Bennett?
Here.
Member Brindle?
Here.
Member Sprague?
Here.
Member Swenson?
Here.
First matter of business for the council tonight is the approval of the meeting agenda. Is there a motion to approve the form of meeting agenda?
So moved.
Got a motion in a second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, say nay. Carried. And then the adoption of the consent agenda is the next thing on our list of work tonight. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Don't entertain a motion to adopt-
Your honor?
Excuse me.
Two points on the consent agenda. One is that we would like to, we request the council to table item 4F, the special assessment agreements for Richmond Hills Park to February 19th. And also, council member Bennett noted an inconsistency in, I believe, item number 4K, the urban area security initiative grant application. The resolution that was attached in the packet was not what was intended to be attached to that cover memo. The new attachment is in front of you tonight.
I would move that consent agenda was going to change it.
Second?
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, say nay. Carried. We do not have any special recognitions or presentations this evening. And we're next going to move to the public hearing portion of the agenda. And the first matter in front of us this evening is the neighborhood boundaries and names and related neighborhood association policy. This is a hearing that the council asked be set on so that folks could come from the community and express their thoughts and opinions regarding the proposals that have been made. We've got some people, the team is right in front of us here in the front row, that have worked very hard on this policy of trying to build a better community, build a stronger community, build stronger neighborhoods. And we're going to hear a little bit about that tonight. I'm going to turn it over to manager Neil, who's going to introduce the topic, and then we're going to go into a report by the chair of that group.
Thank you, your honor. As you recall, this item, the Neighborhood Association Initiative, was a goal of the city councils in 2012. Considerable amount of work was done on this item in that year, including kind of the culmination, which was a presentation to the council on December 4th during a work session that was led by the committee, Citizens Committee, that has been, that was working on this item for you. You requested at that work session that that same group of folks come to a council meeting and make that same presentation. So that's what we have lined up for you tonight. So with really no further ado, I'll turn this over to Hope Melton. And Hope was the facilitator of the presentation to the council on December 4th, and she's going to lead the presentation for you tonight. Following the presentation, our staff can take questions from council. It is a public hearing. The plan for this evening was for you to accept public testimony following the presentation. We'll answer what questions we can answer. And this item, then, is kind of teed up for you to make a decision on at the next council meeting on February 5th. Ms. Melton?
Thank you.
Mayor Hovland and members of the city council, thank you for the opportunity for our committee to present our report to you. This is the Name Your Neighborhood project. Here are the members of our committee. From the left, Bright Dornblazer, Jennifer Joffe, Jean Persha, who's not here tonight, Bob Moore, Bob Carlson, Rob Erickson, Bob Miller, Dick Brozek, Paula Harder, and myself. This is the agenda for the PowerPoint. I'm first going to review the mission and purpose of this effort. Second, talk at some detail about the process and participation. And finally, in even more detail, we're going to present to you the proposed boundaries and names by quadrant. The greater city objective here is to provide the people of Edina with an opportunity to voluntarily form city-recognized neighborhood associations. Identifying and naming the neighborhood communities is the first step in that process. The second step is for the city council to develop policies for city interaction with the recognized neighborhood associations. Why define neighborhood communities? Neighborhoods create a sense of place and provide a historical context for the area and the city at large. Defining neighborhood communities adds value with and without becoming recognized neighborhood associations. Okay. This is not moving. It disappeared. Maybe the cables are frozen. Paul's revision is good. Paul's revision is good. Yeah, he's taking a good job. You just want a little time? Do you want to hit the button? This is a word that we use all the time, but it would probably be very difficult to reach a consensus on what a neighborhood is. We all have different ideas. Is it your street, your subdivision, your network of friends, social contacts? Everyone in the room would probably define their neighborhood differently. A neighborhood community is generally larger than a few streets or blocks. It's larger than a subdivision, a homeowners or improvement association, a historic area, a condo association, a person's network of friends or contacts, and some existing neighborhood associations. But neighborhood community is generally smaller than an elementary school attendance area, a precinct, or a walking shade. Okay? So we need to think larger than your backyard barbecue. A neighborhood community should cover the geographic area where you and your neighbors want to have input due to shared interests. These are the general criteria that we used in defining neighborhood communities. Common interests in a geographic area, size and viability. It takes a considerable amount of effort to develop and maintain a neighborhood association, so you need to have an adequate group of people. Natural boundaries such as a creek or a park, roadways access, current neighborhood associations, of which we have several, including Morningside and Country Club and White Oaks Associations, the history of an area, distinctive features. We were very concerned that no area of Edina be left out of a neighborhood. And our key goal was to be inclusive rather than exclusive. Another important reason to define neighborhood communities is to support the voluntary formation of recognized neighborhood associations. Recognized neighborhood associations are residents and property owners working together to make the neighborhood a better place to live, learn, play, raise a family, and do business. And by promoting recognized neighborhood associations, the city is building civic infrastructure and promoting community engagement. Recognized neighborhood associations foster communication by distributing information to all residents in that area so that they can make informed decisions, by allowing two-way communication between the city, city government and the neighborhoods, and by creating smaller venues for interaction. Neighborhood associations, in addition, exist in addition to the traditional public input process. The city will look on them to provide input on, or look to them to provide input on long-term area plans, requests for zoning changes, street redesign or reconstruction, and park design or reconstruction. So recognized sitting neighborhoods communicate resident ideas and concerns to the city, and the city asks recognized neighborhood associations to communicate the need for input or assistance on an area issue or project. Recognized neighborhood associations build community through cooperative action by organizing volunteer projects, by supporting other city programs such as Neighborhood Watch, Night to Unite, by promoting social activities, and working to ensure neighborhood safety and security. What won't happen with recognized neighborhood associations? No one will be forced to form or join a recognized neighborhood association. No one will be forced to pay dues to belong to an association. Recognized associations will not be delegated tasks by the city. Each association will determine its own agenda and priorities, and the city will offer the opportunity to provide input on neighborhood projects. Recognized associations will not be assumed to speak on behalf of all residents or property owners. Individuals will still be encouraged to present their own viewpoint. They won't take the place of existing groups. This is a graphic which shows you that all kinds of associations can exist within the boundaries of recognized neighborhood associations. So this is a graphic which shows that existing neighborhood associations can choose to continue as they are, in which case no changes are required, or they can become city-recognized neighborhood associations, in which case they'll need to match the boundaries to the neighborhood community map and to meet the city's recognition standards. It's important to differentiate between neighborhood associations and homeowner associations. With neighborhood associations, membership is open to all residents and property owners, but participation is voluntary. Dues, if any, are voluntary. No legal authority to enact or enforce maintenance or design requirements exist, and a democratic process is established with bylaws. With a homeowner association, membership is mandatory within a development, usually mandatory dues are charged. Homeowners associations have legal authority to enact and enforce maintenance and design requirements, and they are formed as corporations with formal bylaws and governing boards. Now, I'm going to talk about the citizen participation process that we designed and implemented. Again, this is this three-step process leading to the voluntary formation of city-recognized neighborhood associations. Our mission, that is, the Neighborhood Identification Steering Committee, our mission was to design a citizen input process for review by the city council, to facilitate that citizen input process, and based on the input from that process, to make citywide recommendations with respect to boundaries and names. These are the steps in the process. I should say that we met twice a month with two- to three-hour meetings. In addition, we had subcommittee work. And in cases where we had great difficulty determining neighborhood names and boundaries, we actually canvassed the homes in those neighborhoods to the best of our ability. We, whoops, back. We started off with a written survey, which was published in the news publication about town. It was always, also published on the Internet, and that was in April of last year. Our first community-wide meeting was on May 30th. This was an introductory meeting, and we began brainstorming. And we did that by presenting the people who showed up. We divided them into quadrants, and each quadrant was presented with a blank sheet. And from that point, those who participated then began to draw the boundaries and the names. We took that information back, worked on it, and had our second citywide community meeting. There was a publicity plan that we worked on, so these meetings were published in the newspaper and certainly on the city's website. At the second meeting, we took the information from the first meeting and provided some neighborhood boundary name and name options. And then we took that information and worked on it and held a final citywide community meeting where we reviewed our recommendations for a citywide map. So we had citywide perspective at that point that we got from working on each one of the quadrants. We then reported our recommendations to the city council working session on December 4th. There were approximately 200 responses to the written survey, approximately 120 attendees at all three community meetings, 92 comments received on Speak Up Edina that was on the city website, 216 comments were received from all sources, and we created, in this process, 35 different maps. These are all the data sources that we used in drawing these boundaries and coming up with the names, the community meetings, the Speak Up Edina blogs and comment cards, which we passed out at every one of these citywide community meetings, the survey results, information about existing association, other maps, and the canvassing process that I mentioned. So all of this is incorporated in the proposed neighborhood boundaries and names that we will now review. So Laura Erickson?
And I'm going to be talking about the northwest, or excuse me, northeast quadrant, and I'll give you an overview. The final number of neighborhoods we proposed for this area was 11. The total number of maps created and reviewed were nine. The fewest number of neighborhoods proposed were nine. The highest number of neighborhoods that we thought about were 13, and the total number of neighborhood names considered within the quadrant were 23. Okay. And I'm going to start going through the neighborhoods with you. At the very top, we have Morningside, which is bound, has three boundaries on the north, east, and west as the city limits. And then on the south, sorry, I have to use this because I can't see, is, I believe, 42nd Street, or 44th, behind Sunnyside, so it's the residents that, if there were an alley there, it would be the residents on the backside of the alley from Sunnyside going over, does a little jag through, remembering some of the traditional areas. Then we come over to the, just below that, on the northwest, we have the Greater Country Club area, which shares a boundary with Morningside, going all the way over west, following the city boundary, going over to 100, and then down to 50th, and going across that way over to kind of the alley, if you will, between Maple Road and Arden Avenue. To the east of that is White Oaks, which boundaries Morningside on the north, and then Country Club is on, it's, well, it's on the east of Country Club, the city boundary on the total east for White Oaks, and then it follows between 49th and 49th and a half mostly. Then we went around for fif, just south of White Oaks, we have 50th and France, which is the kind of the traditional business district, going down, I'm not sure what this map doesn't give, oh, kind of the alley again to the east of Maple Road, going down to 50th, and then following 51st around. Just to the south of that is Arden Park, which is basically bounded by 50th on the north, Wooddale on the west, France, is that France, on the east, and, okay, now my iPad's not playing nice, so I can't see. 54th on the south, yep. And then just below that is Mini Haha Woods. And there again, it's bound by Wooddale and 54, yeah, 54th on the north, and then I was looking for it on the side there, but.
Looks like 58.
58, yeah, going over.
Right before, oh, it's right before Philbrook.
It's just north of Philbrook there.
North of Philbrook.
60th.
It's right, right.
It's a property line.
Yeah, it's a property line.
It's a property line behind Woodland Road. It's the houses, actually, you know, property line behind the houses on the north side of Philbrook.
And then to the east of Mini Haha Woods there, we have Chowan Park, which follows the city boundary on the north side, France on the west side, the city boundary on the east side, and then we divided that up, going down on 60th. Then we're going to go back west to Pamela Park, which has Mini Haha Woods on the north side, France on the east. On the west side, it's sort of the back of the property line on Wooddale, going down to Valley View, and then down to 62nd Street. And then I guess I'll just go back over east, and Strackhauer Park is bounded on the north by Chowan Park, and then has the city boundary on the east, which is Xerxes, following 62, and then France again. And then if we jump over the Pamela Park, we go to the Concord area, and that is following Valley View on the east, and between, the property line between Wooddale and Fairfax going up, then it goes up to 50, cuts west on 58, follows around the schools there in Southview, over to Highway 100, and then follows down to 62. Just to the north of that is Gulf Terrace, and there again, it's just north, follows the same boundaries as Concord, has Highway 100 on the west, 50th to the north, and then it's Wood, is that Wooddale? Yeah, Wooddale on the east. Turn it over to who's next. Bruce?
Laura, would you hold on for just a minute here? Does anybody have any questions for Laura, however doing this? Not from the audience, but up here.
Oh, just you guys?
Yeah, just us. You know, we've had a lot of emails from, I think primarily the Country Club area, about this greater country club designation, and I wonder if you couldn't explain to folks, both that'll be watching this on television and in the audience, as to why you thought you should include Sunny Slope Neighborhood right here across from City Hall with Country Club Neighborhood.
Well, there again, it was going into the size and trying to keep things fairly consistent because when we first were looking at all the neighborhoods, we had so many different neighborhoods when you looked at the city as a whole. And so then we were trying to combine some, and we were looking at the size, number of households and the population, and then it gets into, too, that little wedge in the northwest, yeah, the northwest part of the quadrant, too, that was going to be an orphan. So that's why we put them together.
Okay. And would your answer be the same with respect to that neighborhood, east of France, west of Xerxes?
Yeah, and the Chowan.
South of 54th and to the creek?
Yes.
Kind of north of the creek, back in behind Grand View, behind the gas station there at 54th and France.
Yeah, that's correct. And in the earlier maps-
Because I know they think they, they don't have much, you know, way of relationship with people south of the creek that you've designated as the Chowan Park neighborhood. I think the people in Country Club and Sunny Slope probably feel the same way about their respective neighborhoods.
Yeah, and there we go back to trying to be inclusive. And we did some discussions in the neighborhoods, too, about the types of housing. And in Edina right now, that's a moving target. I mean, because I live on Wooddale where they're tearing down the old 52's, you know, vintage 19, early 50's bungalows and putting McMansions up. So what type of housing stock are you going to go with, then? The traditional or the new? You know, so.
Okay. Good. Member Swenson?
But there's nothing to say that if there's a neighborhood meeting and a neighborhood decides that it doesn't work, and they either want to join an adjoining neighborhood in a different direction, or they want to vote in a different name because they don't, there's nothing that says that can't happen.
Correct.
Okay.
And we figured that some neighborhoods would definitely probably want to change their names. I mean, even within the committee, we went back and forth some, from meeting to meeting.
Right, right. Okay. So let's, I think that's good to get out there right now. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Laura. Mr. Carlson?
I'm Bruce Carlson, and I'm going to speak to the northwest quadrant, which is bordered by the St. Louis Park on the north and Highway 100 on the, on the east, 169 in the west, and the crosstown on the south. I'm not going to go into the specific details of every boundary, but I want to talk a little bit about some of the dynamics of this quadrant and some of the boundaries along the way. First of all, we ended up with 11 total neighborhoods here, and at one point, we had 18. And by all arguments, you could probably justify 18 because there's a lot of little intimate neighborhoods in here. But we ended up with 11. We created nine different maps, and we considered 34 different names. And so starting with the northeast, you have Todd Park, as you can see, with Highway 100 and Interlochen, and what's traditionally referred to as the Hilldale area as part, in that Todd Park area. So there, and again, you can see that's a relatively large area. We looked at breaking off the Cascade, the Pacific Railroad there, could have been a neighborhood there, Hilldale. Some people think of that as a neighborhood onto itself, but the greater area we looked at is Todd Park. And then going to the west, you can, is a large geographic area with Interlochen, Country Club there, however, not all that many homes. And there we have the, what's traditionally referred to as the Rolling Green area, and then the Interlochen Park area. Interlochen Park is actually a Hopkins name that's used in Hopkins. To the west of there, which is west of Blake Road, we've referred to that as the President's area. It's been referred to that for many years due to many of the roads there named after various presidents. And then to the south of that, we have Parkwood Knowles. Interestingly enough, the northwest area has the two largest neighborhoods in the entire city by population, and that is Parkwood Knowles and the countryside. So you can see Parkwood Knowles is a large area and pretty much defined by 169 Vernon and Blake Road generally. The, and then there, you can see lots of little jogs in there. That would be the Fox Meadow neighborhood. And again, there's no access. We actually drew these lines in people's backyards and so forth because there's no access into the Parkwood Knowles area. And then we brought- And, and then we brought it down to Vernon to include what was often referred to as the Carson Hills area. And this is one area that is of interest because Fox Meadow does have a neighborhood association. The northern part of that has a neighborhood association established already. So if they were to be a part of a city-recognized neighborhood, they would have to subsume that Carson Hills area and broaden their, their scope. And then as you go to the Highlands, that again seems to be a pretty traditional area. And again, of interest, I happen to live in the Highlands area. I've lived there for twenty-three years and learned during this process that there is a, a neighborhood association called Edina Highlands Neighborhood Association on the east side of the park. Twenty-three years later, I, I learned that and I'm on the west side of the park. And so that particular association has seventy-two homes, seventy-two homes, and they were established for, for the specific neighborhood interests there. They were boulevard islands, lighting, signage, that type of thing. So there again, as, as our presentation showed earlier, there are, there are many small associations or already things established within these, within greater boundaries. And that is somewhat the case with the Country Club as well, when you, when you ask that. And then from, from there, we have the Grand View District here again. Vernon, we have lots of topography issues with Skyline and, and the Highlands there. We have Highway One Hundred and then the, the railroad tracks there. We, we included, here's another situation, an established neighborhood called Brookview Heights. Is, and I, they have some organization, I'm sure will continue to do so, but we felt that they had lots of interests and lots of ties with the Grand View area and we subsumed them within Grand View. And then south of there, you can see we have Melody Lake. Many people would have, through the years, have referred to that as Richmond Hills, I believe. And, and it's, and, and then Benton is the divider there. And then we move into Birchcrest. And then the, to the, to the, west of that, we have the large area of the countryside. And again, they, they are quite organized already with these boundaries and, and are pretty established. Okay, from there, we go, we've got a, I, I think probably the area that we struggled with the most, what we refer to as the Londonary area right now. And that includes an intimate area called Bredesen Park, also referred to as Clarny Shores, Clarny Hills. Then we have Viking Hills, we have Walnut Ridge and many other little smaller town home and apartment associations within there. The, of, of interest is there are two associations in here already. Viking Hills has a neighborhood association, Bredesen Park has a neighborhood association per their neighborhood. So here, and I believe Walnut Ridge may be semi-organized as well. And there's some thought, some comments and some thoughtful comments on this name. I'm not too sure we were all sold on it either. So that, that might be a name, we think Bredesen Park, Nine Mile Creek. We looked at Walnut Ridge, Viking Hills. But for, for the, it's, at this time, we have, have called it Londonary. And we also questioned the Bredesen Park area, if that should be related to Parkwood Knowles or part of countryside or part of Londonary. And so those were some of the challenges that we, we saw in that particular area. So again, there were many thoughtful comments associated with that.
Questions for Mr. Carlson?
All right, good.
Thank you.
I'm Bob Moore and I'll be representing the southeast quadrant. The quadrant is defined by Highway One Hundred on the west, the crosstown highway on the north, the city boundary with Richfield on the east and the city boundary with Bloomington on the south. We have a final number of proposed neighborhoods of nine. The total number of maps we created and reviewed for this quadrant was nine. The fewest number of neighborhoods proposed was only six, the highest number we had. We were up to ten. And the total number of names considered within this quadrant are eleven. A challenge of this quadrant is all of the high-density housing that you will find around the Southdale area and going south, that being condominiums, the Edina Towers, the Colony, the Rembrandt facility is located up there. There's quite a few condos also on York Avenue and also the Weston Hotel, all the way going down actually to Four Ninety-four. So we have the Southdale area. Going down, we have the Promenade, which is bordered by Seventieth Street, France Avenue. And then along the bottom, it is the south side of the Promenade and the piece of property where the Macy's Home Store is. And then it goes over to the Little Yorktown Park. Continuing down, we have the Edinburgh area, which goes down essentially Edinburgh Way and kind of cuts up behind the Covington Homes. We have Centennial Lakes, which includes the, the Centennial Lakes, the Office Park at the south and then the individual home or the group homes, the townhomes on the north. Pentagon Park, which is currently all commercial right now, except there is one piece of property that you can see a little cutout here. That, I believe, is the Burgundy Place. And we have placed those people into the Lake Edina neighborhood so they would not be all alone in their only little building there. Lake Edina continues up and that goes all the way up to Seventieth Street. We have the South Cornelia area, which is right around Cornelia School. And then below that, we have another high-density area of Park Lawn and that is off of Gallagher and Park Lawn Road. Any questions?
Questions for Mr. Moore at this point in time? No, thank you.
Mayor, City Council members, Rob Erickson. I'm here to talk about the southwest quadrant. And one thing I wanted to note on the southwest quadrant, the representation that did show up for our meetings requested that we first start out looking at and deciding on the Indian Hills. And at the time that we had the discussion, it was Indian foothills. So during our discussions with, with, with the community, we, we did focus in on that and we spent a significant amount of time in, in talking about that. And really through those discussions, consensus was drawn to provide Indian Hills with the overall boundary that we have there and, and then Indian Trails separated out with that. So again, I, I know there was some real concern because originally Indian Hills started out as seventy-five homes and we wanted to make sure that we spent the time in, in so dealing with that topic. Then going south on that, we have Braemar Hills, which of course encompasses the Braemar Golf Course area. What we did is we went up to Saint, Saint Pat's Church and then we did encompass the Chapel Hills area. It's a small area that's somewhat known and it's a little bit isolated, but in order to keep it somewhat consistent, we did include that in the Braemar Hills area due to the fact that it was probably a little more access there. Then going down again to Dewey Hill, that's kind of being marked through Dewey Road and then up to Cahill. And that's somewhat been identified just sort of historically. Above that is Prospect Knowles, which what we did is we spent a good deal of time on that because there was two real development names that were in there. It's really a combination of Prospect Hills and Kemich, I believe, Knowles. And so it's a combination there that goes up to Seventieth Street. Then we have Cahill, which is really all commercial at this point. And so you can see right above that, there's a little notch out of that. That is where that, that apartment complex is. And since it is commercial at this point, we did include that in with the, the Brookview Heights area at this point, which Brookview Heights itself has a sign and has been somewhat relatively known and had their own neighborhood meetings along the way. Then north of that is Normandale Park, the park itself there. And there was a little bit of a struggle with that on how to separate that out due to the railroad going through there. But it really made sense due to the size to have that be inclusive in there. And we kind of referred to that as sort of the, the area that was kind of, kind of shaped like Florida. So then going south of there, we had the Heights. And the Heights is based off of a name that is based off a development name. And we were a little bit concerned about so many names being Hills, Heights and all of that. So it was really decided that through consensus that the Heights was an appropriate name for that area. Then another area was going just west of that is Creek Valley. And you've got Creek Valley School in there, you've got the High School in there and you've got Valley View. And so there's a little bit of a challenge there because off on the right-hand side, there's about thirty-four homes that currently can call themselves Creek Valley. And that's a neighborhood that's been established. So the combination was brought in with the, the area moreover by Creek Valley School. So are there any questions on that?
Questions for Mr. Erickson at this point in time? All right.
Thank you.
Any questions from council for staff or any of the presenters? Otherwise, we can open this up to a public hearing. First of all, on behalf of the council, I want to thank all of you for, as residents of our town and volunteers for working on this project. I think we all think we have a great sense of community here and the notion here was to try to enhance that sense of, of community. And we, we laud your efforts and we know we have some people that have some concerns in the audience and questions and we're going to open it up for a public hearing right now. Member Swenson, you ahead?
Just a, a comment that, you know, the goal of this was that we could communicate with our neighborhoods better when things come up, not that these neighborhoods represent individual people. So I think when you look at this, it's important to think about that. Because that for us was really, how do we, you know, St. Louis Park has a lot of neighborhood associations. Not every neighborhood has an association. They have a grouping, let me put it that way. And so if there's something that's going on, that's coming up, that they want to let their residents know about, whether it's a business, a building or something to do with rebuilding a park and redesigning it or whatever it is, they can get out information to their neighborhoods very, very quickly. And that was really one of the goals that this is. So there isn't an agenda, there isn't a, a reason that we want to govern neighbors. We want to communicate with neighbors. So keep that in mind when you think about what it is that we're doing.
Member Bennett?
Thank you. And as I understand it, the communication isn't a replacement for the legal communication. It's just that, for instance, with zoning matters, variance requests, there's a rather narrower definition of the people who are entitled to notice. And so this is to provide for wider notice on issues of concern. It would include, for instance, a playground reconstruction, how to notify and involve a larger area in a discussion. I also want to note that in terms of, so we have some anecdotal information requests over the years where people have felt like by the time, either that legal notice is too limited, why didn't we hear about it? Or perhaps the timing wasn't what people would have wanted. We also have some empirical information from the Quality of Life Survey that was done in 2011. When people were asked what their sources of information were for information about the city, thirty-plus percent of the respondents answered that they got, that the major source of their information was their friends and neighbors. And forty-five percent said that their friends and neighbors were a minor source of information. So over seventy-five percent of people in a statistically valid survey were saying that the, their major and minor sources of information about things that were happening in their city were coming from their friends and neighbors. And we knew that that was a pretty important resource and that was one of the foundations of this work.
Good. Chairman Elton, would you come back up, please? I noticed I had a couple of questions on my note-taking here. Hope, would you come up, please? One of the questions I had as you were making your presentation and looking at the proposed policy was this. Can you, can you, and you may have answered it in part with one of your subsequent slides, but there, there are people that worry about another level of representation that, that they don't want. You know, they don't want to have to formalize this neighborhood association. They don't want to become a recognized neighborhood association. And so the question is, can you be a neighborhood association recognized by the city under the proposed policy without engaging in the formalized process provided in the, in the proposed policy? Now, I noticed in one of your subsequent slides, you said existing neighborhood associations may stay as they are. And of course, the one that comes to mind is, is Country Club. That, that I've had a lot of input from folks that have been integrally involved in that association over the years. And they may not want to adopt bylaws or create the kind of structure that, that you proposed here. So can they, can they continue to be a neighborhood association as they are right now and still receive the kind of information that the city disseminates to them at the present time without going through this more formalized process? I guess that's the question.
Sure. Mayor Holdon and members of the city council, I think the operative word here is voluntary. So yes, the answer is yes. They can remain a neighborhood association without becoming a city-recognized neighborhood association.
All right.
It's completely voluntary.
And continuing to stay as they are, would that in any way cause the level of communication between the city and that association to be diminished in any form or fashion?
I wouldn't think so, but I really don't know because I think that, that, you know, the answer to that question will come from the development of the city's policies of, in creating and supporting these neighborhoods. So, so that was really outside of our purview.
Sure, that's more a question for us, I guess.
Exactly, exactly.
All right. And then there.
Mayor Hovland?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, we're here. And maybe if I could add to that comment. Do you know, I think it's possible for a neighborhood such as Country Club, which is fairly well-known, and if they haven't established neighborhood contact, that maybe the communication from the city wouldn't change. But for other neighborhood associations where we don't have an established contact without the official city recognition, it's going to be much harder for us to be able to track and, and maintain that communication link that we were hoping to.
Okay. All right, thank you. Go ahead, and then I'll ask another question.
I think one of the concerns, too, in what we're looking at in terms of formation of policy, which we're, I think, looking at for February as well, is that the, the essence of the proposed or suggested bylaws is, concerns communication, notice, election of leadership and stuff that I think goes to the transparency of an organization that is free as a private entity to exist completely voluntarily. But if the city is going to recognize it in terms of trying to, to communicate with a broader neighborhood through that organization, as has been done successfully elsewhere, then I think there is a desire for a certain foundation of organizational sufficiency that everybody within that geographic area is getting notice. Everyone within that geographic area has the chance to participate, for instance, in an annual meeting. And everyone within that geographic area has the opportunity to stand for leadership of that group, however that group chooses to define its functions.
Thank you. Bruce Carlson was talking about the northwest quadrant and one of the things he mentioned it is that in one of the proposed neighborhoods, and I think it was Viking Hills was a, was a subset of one of the proposed neighborhoods, there were several neighborhood associations within the confines of what's now proposed to be a broader descriptor of a neighborhood. What if Viking Hills, under your proposed policy, decides they don't like being in that, that bigger neighborhood designation? They want to, they want to be able to communicate directly with the city. They may or may not want to be a recognized neighborhood association, but they want to continue what they have and, and be in direct communication with the city and don't care to be within that larger neighborhood. How does, how does the policy address that?
Well, we, again, we didn't develop policy here, but, but my understanding is that the city will develop policies for them to appeal, if you will, or, or to change the decision that we made. I mean, I think that's possible. I don't know exactly what the timeframe or the procedure for that would be. But it, it's not impossible.
Yeah, I mean, but you, you are advancing a document. You call a neighborhood association policy a proposed policy. So, yeah, what I hear you saying is. policy a proposed policy, so yeah, what I hear you saying is-
That's from staff, mayor, that's not from the committee. The committee's doing the boundaries, and attached to this is our-
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, that's helpful. Okay, thanks very much. That's helpful.
Sure.
All right. Now, we're going to open this up as a public hearing, and if there's anyone that wishes to come up and inquire or comment, you've got three minutes, as Ms. Bennerott said. You'll see a yellow light go on with, and that'll warn you, you have thirty seconds to wrap up your comments, and we use the lighting system for a reason so that everybody's treated equally here in terms of time usage, and if you don't have an overhead that you want to use, I would suggest using one of the side podiums, and make sure you give us your name and address when you come up. So please come forward if you so desire. Thank you. Yes, sir. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Brandt Palaza. I live at forty-eight oh four West Sunny Slope Road, so just across the fiftieth from the building here. I want to thank the council for letting me get in and talk for just a couple of minutes. I want to thank especially the committee for doing all the work. I know it's easy for a lot of us to sit back and say, what are these people thinking of, you know, how could they come up with this? But I personally would not want to be in the same situation you guys were in, in trying to make these definitions, so I appreciate it that you've done. Mr. Mayor, I appreciate you bringing up the fact that Sunny Slope was mentioned early on. I was worried you were going to steal my thunder, I'm glad you didn't, because I've got a lot of things I'd like to talk about. If it's possible to show the screenshot of the Northeast Quadrant, that would be helpful, because the one thing I want to point out is, even though the Sunny Slope neighborhood is one-hundred percent in favor of what this group is doing, our concern is less about the development of community, because we always have been strong advocates for community, and I'll talk about that in just a second, but we're more concerned about identity and loss of identity. So for example, when everybody leaves tonight, if you happen to leave going out of the parking lot on Fiftieth, look straight ahead, you're going to see two large stone structures that say Sunny Slope on each one of them, that's very, very important in this neighborhood, that concept of community. Now, during the presentation, I remember looking at, well, there you can see, if you can blow up a little bit on the Greater Country Club, and again, I'll also point out that we have nothing against Country Club. We like those folks. We're just concerned, again, about our identity. What I'd like to point out is there were nine criteria, general criteria identified for the identification of a community, a neighborhood community. And when you look at, three of those were natural boundaries, roadways, and access. I mean, our little neighborhood of Sunny Slope is so separated because of the creek, so one of the things that I noticed is, I felt there was less emphasis placed on natural geographic boundaries. For example, you look at the creek, and there weren't a whole lot of boundaries drawn using the creek. Now, I'm going to take a little leap here, I'm going to leap and bear with me if you will, but look at the Mississippi River, okay? There are only two states that the Mississippi River actually crosses through a state, and that's at the start and the stop. There are ten states where the Mississippi River actually acts as a boundary for that state, and when I look at the boundaries that were drawn here, I don't mean to question the logic that the group used, I'm just questioning that our neighborhood in Sunny Slope is so isolated. The only time we speak to the folks on the other side of the creek is right about now, when it's frozen, we can walk over there. Other than that, we don't see a whole lot of people from over there unless we go over there or they come over to our side. Another one of the variables, general criteria, was size and viability. If you look at the Greater Country Club group, that's the fourth or fifth largest of all the neighborhoods defined. Small is hard to manage, large is hard to manage, too, and so we're kind of looking at that thinking that might be a little too big. And so our suggestion is to try, again, try to carve us out. We already have a neighborhood organization. We use Nextdoor, which is an online web service for us to communicate with one another, and it works very, very well.
Mr. Palaza, I have to ask you to stop, and if you have anything else you want to add, you've got two weeks to submit it in writing, and same with anybody else, we're going to take a look at everything that people submit, and I'm sure the committee will as well.
I thank you very, very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Members Swenson.
And while he has a good point about geographic boundaries, one of those geographic boundaries that catches us in a conundrum is, there was a proposal to redo and change the elevation on a house in the Sunny Slope area, and what I kept hearing were the people that lived across the creek from that didn't get any notice because they didn't live in the neighborhood and they didn't know what was going on. When we went to put up sound walls, we had to work with the neighborhood as a whole. So some of what we want to communicate to you might be because we need to get across boundaries. So I'm not advocating for one neighborhood or one boundary or whatever, but I just want you to understand from a council point of view, trying to get information out to our residents, that boundary that you see that keeps you in your community mentally, sometimes we need to cross to get communication to the other side for you.
All right. Anyone else? Sure, welcome.
My name is John Curry. I appreciate the time, mayor and council, and the tremendously thankless work that all of you guys have done. I also live in Sunny Slope at forty-nine twenty-nine West, actually live behind what we like to call the Great Wall of Edina, directly behind the traffic light here. And none of us in the neighborhood that I have spoken to so far were aware of this process until late last week, and then it went through our existing line of communication. There is an unofficial but longstanding Sunny Slope Neighborhood Association that's been in effect longer than the eighteen years I've lived in the neighborhood. We communicate via our own sort of internet network we're now a part of, I've forgotten, Brad, what it's called.
Nextdoor.
Thank you, as of just last, end of last year. And in the few days since this was brought to our attention, with roughly a dozen of the residents of the roughly sixty, or five dozen that we have, no one that I have found wants to give up the identity of Sunny Slope. It is a nicely-defined neighborhood, and it's a neighborhood that already has established neighborhood activities, neighborhood organization. We try to get together as a neighborhood at least twice a year. There have been two events, one a death in our neighborhood, one a response to the tragic death of young Quinn here in the last few weeks, where we as a neighborhood have risen up to respond, to help our neighbors, to reach out and stand in support of our neighbors. And I think it reflects the inherent voluntary nature of our community, and I think if what the neighborhood, if what the desires for neighborhood for Edina are as they're stated, we have already stepped forward to establish that for ourselves. And I think, I would gently suggest that a neighborhood of roughly sixty-five homes is much more likely to be a friendly, co-mingled, ongoing communicating neighborhood than one of five hundred or eight hundred or nine hundred parcels. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curry, excuse me. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Welcome.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
My name is Steve Boss. I live at forty-nine oh four East Sunny Slope Road, so you've got another Sunny Sloper, which I think makes a broader point about the neighborhood. I listened carefully to the presentation and appreciate the efforts of the group, and the merger between the two neighborhoods on the proposed Greater Country Club, the reason I heard was convenience or efficiency. And I think that's not a great reason as a neighborhood residence, resident that has, and we're talking about a fifty-year history, is working functionally as a volunteer neighborhood organization. I think maps and proposals do matter, and when you've got such a strong community and neighborhood identity that's in place, one thing you have to think about in this process is not doing any harm to an existing neighborhood that works well together. There's neighborhoods with no residents that were proposed. We've got many residents, it's not one of the biggest neighborhoods. We're not part of the historic district in the Country Club proper area. We don't have a park. We love a park, we don't have great access to a park. We have very different interests, and we've got a community organization, a neighborhood organization that works well, and I'd hate to see it mapped out of existence. And I know we've talked about they can still operate, but maps matter, redefining the boundaries matter. You're hearing from residents of our neighborhood association that it matters to them personally. The communication's been overwhelming, and it's been overwhelmingly against the idea of being merged with our friends to the East and Country Club proper. I think it's an idea that needs to be reconsidered particularly to our neighborhood, and I think you're hearing that, first three people are very consistent. We'd like to keep our neighborhood intact in name in this process.
Thank you, Mr. Boss.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Lee McGrath. I live at forty-six nineteen Moreland Avenue in the Country Club section of Edina. I come to you today with input from the leadership of the Country Club Neighborhood Association. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, this is a bad idea. It is a bad idea for the city of Edina as a whole, and it is particularly a bad idea for the Country Club neighborhood and, as expressed earlier, our friends over in Sunny Slope. If there, and I'll give, I want to make three points about that. If there is anything that describes what it is to be an American, it is the role of civil society, it is what Alexis de Tocqueville wrote about in eighteen thirty-one in Democracy of America, it is the voluntary association of individuals coming together to advance the common good. There is no need for this, these types of organizations to be imposed upon neighborhoods by the government. If de Tocqueville is not sufficient to persuade you, think of Mark Zuckerberg. What has happened in the last three years or so is that Facebook has become a social medium of incredible proportion in which people voluntarily form associations. And by contrast, think of Robert Putnam's Bowling Alone, where Putnam complained that it was the invasion of government and the breakdown of private social organization that was the real threat to American, American social life and community. The second point I'd offer is one of great concern about crowding out. The proponents of this legislation wrap it in, wrap their proposal in a speech of this being voluntary and existing associations can continue to thrive, but the reality is is that when government gets involved in any action, it begins to crowd out private initiative. All one has to do is look at social services that were provided by churches and private organizations in the nineteenth and early twentieth century that have come and now disappeared because of the role of welfare programs run from a distant government. So for these two reasons, I think this is a bad, bad idea. Now, my third point is more specific as it relates to, as it relates to Country Club and Sunny Slope, obviously, this is an artificial barrier, and I know the advocates are quite, perhaps are feeling a bit defensive after their hard work that they've put in on this project, but I submit that many people have been working very hard to organize the neighborhood for a long time, to put out a directory to over eight years to hold thirty, over thirty social events, and we have a vibrant, a vibrant-
Sorry to interrupt you, Mr. McGrath, but I've got to keep you on the same time clock as everybody else, so.
A vibrant social, social network that should not be crowded out by a government agent, a government initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. If you want to submit your comments, if you have them in writing, we'll be happy to take them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, for letting us have our, have some feedback on this proposal, and thanks to the committee. I am Kitty O'Day, I live at forty-six ten Bruce, and I live in a neighborhood that has a name, and it's a really great thing, and it sounds, though, from the committee's presentation that there's lots of neighborhoods in Edina that are identified, Walnut Hills, Park Lawn, Viking Hills, Morningside, Concord, Sunny Slope, Country Club, Park Lawn, to name a few. There are already existing neighborhoods in the city, and I think that's great. I think the objective of trying to improve communication to the residents is great, because I can tell you, I was aware of the meetings, but since we had a name, I didn't think it really pertained to us, because it was Name Your Neighborhood, and we already had a name, so I pretty much ignored it until a neighbor pointed out some of the proposals that might be of concern. So I think the things that I just draw caution to would be, there's four things. One is larger is not better from a communication standpoint. I can tell you that the individuals in our neighborhood who have worked so hard to create a mailing list, get email addresses, it is a huge job, and we have five hundred homes. And so proposing that bigger is better from a communication standpoint, I think is just not true, it's not valid. Consistency is not important here. We do not have to have neighborhoods that of equal, it sounds like, from equal size, that was one of the criteria. It truly, it just doesn't make a difference. What you want is to be able to send out a note saying, hey, we're thinking about changing, we're doing sewer water, that's a hot topic, the city's gone through this, wouldn't it be great to have a way to communicate so that people are hearing it from their neighborhood? I think that's fantastic, so, but I don't think you need to have size as a criteria. I have to disagree with Member Bennett on organizational sufficiency. It's a lot of work, you're asking a lot of work of volunteers to create these organizations, be it formalized like Morningside, be it more informal like Concord, okay? And to expect that they are going to go way beyond their boundaries, and I don't recall the exact size of it, but I just think is unrealistic, and I think it's going to fail because of that, because you're going to have a hard time finding people who are willing to take on that job. We had trouble finding people to take on five hundred homes. So, you know, I think you've got to be realistic. What is your goal? To get communication out. I really propose smaller is better, use the existing neighborhoods as a core, you've got lots of information from the sewer water projects in terms of people who were involved to contact and say, hey, can you guys help us organize this? But it doesn't have to be formal, it doesn't have to have bylaws, it doesn't have to have a bureaucratic structure. And I also just draw, draw pause at, I understand the thing with a home in Sunny Slope and the Country Club neighbors having concerns and not being aware, but that's an exception, not a rule. So let's not create something based on exception, okay? That could have been dealt with with an email to Sunny Slope and an email to Country Club, and it would have been taken care of. The situation, you know, it doesn't have to create a new organization. So, again, love neighborhoods, but don't think this is the right way to go. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. O'Day.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
City Council. My name is Joe Eilers, I'm at forty-eight oh nine Hilltop, that's also in Sunny Slope, and I'd like to just reiterate, without going into the long, drawn-out specific details about my fellow neighbors, John and Grant and Steve, I think that I support everything they've said. In addition, I'm a little concerned, I've got a couple of questions, for example, what would you do with our signage outside the columns, the stone columns? Would that change to greater, whatever the new name would be, is one question I would have, so how would that look? Secondly, I'm a little concerned that it's a bit like the cart before the horse, because you have the redrawing of lines now, but then the policy is to come, and I'm concerned that one, that we should know whether we procommas, what the policy actually is going to be before we then draw it and decide, and so that's another question I have, and that's more rhetorical question, we don't have to answer it now, but I'd like you guys to think about that as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Travers. Anyone else?
I'll move, we close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, so moving to second, that we close the public hearing, discussion. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Curry? All right, so I think Manny Gurnell mentioned at the beginning here, this was an important component of this overall endeavor that we embarked upon with all these citizen volunteers from our community, and we really wanted one last chance at public input here through a public hearing process, even though they've done a lot of public input themselves. So now, we've got a chance to ruminate on this a little bit. the work that's been done in terms of adopting in whole or in part their recommendations and then looking at this policy itself. So we really appreciate the input. If you have any further input that you want to provide to us, feel free to get it to us in writing, send it to City Hall by email. As I said earlier, a lot of you have done that already and done an outstanding job of communicating with us. A lot of good food for thought out there, so we thank you very much. Members break.
Mayor, just to answer the concern about the policy, the policy was included in this agenda item, and it's available as a staff report online for your review.
All right, good. That concludes the public hearing portion of the agenda with regard to this particular matter, and will be no further discussion on this matter tonight by the council. We have one other public hearing matter in front of us this evening, and that's a vacation request. And Director Hul has this. Sir, we're not at the public hearing phase yet on this matter. So we're going to -- all right, here's what we're going to do. We're going to have staff presentation first. We're going to have staff presentation first, and then we'll open it up for public testimony. So thank you for your patience. Director Hul.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we have a public hearing for vacating essentially a roadway easement located at 5205 Benton Avenue. It was initiated actually by the property owner located at 5205 Benton Avenue. It's kind of a unique request or situation. There's a parcel of land that's about 30 feet wide that's located on the westerly side of this lot of 5205. The history of it, it was actually deeded to the city in 1957 by the same, essentially the same property owner that lives there. And in your package tonight, we do have that deed that was deeded to the city. They're essentially asking for that parcel back. It was deeded to the city to be used for street purposes. And so what we did was we ran it through the same right-of-way vacation process that we normally would. And part of that is to look at or notify all the utilities, to see if there's any utilities in that area. CenterPoint Energy and Exo Energy actually has utilities within the westerly 10 feet of the parcel. So we're going to be asking for, to retain 10 feet as a utility easement. The other utilities do not have any of their facilities within that 30 feet. So staff, we basically conclude looking at the comprehensive plan, that we are not indicating any future right-of-way for that parcel, and that you actually deed back the parcel, but then have them sign a utility easement on the westerly 10 feet. With that, I'll take any questions you may have.
Questions for Director Hul, Member Bennett, then Member Swenson.
Thank you. Director Hul, this council has discussed the desirability of having an inventory of city rights of way throughout the city that have been designated previously for transportation purposes. We know that in the past, there has been some loss of voluntary giving up of right-of-way that could have been used for particularly pedestrian paths. Has that inventory been performed yet?
Councilmember Bennett, no, it hasn't. We're anticipating doing that when we're looking at the pedestrian maps and updating the pedestrian maps, is to go through the entire city and all the subdivisions such and see if there's any unimproved right-of-ways or parcels that are in the city's names that could possibly be used for future purposes like that.
Okay, and a follow-up question. When I was on the council, when we developed the existing comprehensive plan, the update of the 1999 plan, and it's my understanding and recollection that the sidewalk plan, the pedestrian plan that is in the existing, the 2008 comprehensive plan, was really the 1999 plan brought forward without much of any study or consideration of need for existing facilities. There was a lot of focus on a lot of other areas, and as I recall, we just didn't have the time to spend on that area. Am I correct in my recollection?
That's the way I would state it all, so is that it was, a little bit of it was modified, but not a lot of it was modified, and wasn't looked at for the same way that we're looking at pedestrian facilities today.
Okay, thank you.
Members Swenson.
So this easement here, does it go back behind the other lots that runs south of this?
No, actually, if I get the PowerPoint back up.
I mean, you kind of blocked it off on this one map as just being on this particular piece of property. Is that the case?
That is the case. There's a 5904 Code Avenue actually goes all the way back to the westerly property line. There's no other easements or right-of-way or anything set aside to the south of this area.
Okay, then I'm a little confused why we got it in the first place.
You know, I'm not too sure. Maybe, I believe the Norbies are here tonight, so they might go to shed some light on that. I don't know why it was actually deeded to the city. The only thing I could think of is if you go to the north, there is some right-of-way that was set aside for Code Avenue, but then Code Avenue was actually located further to the east. So maybe as the subdivisions were developed, that it was actually not needed as they, you know, created more and more subdivisions.
So for the number of years since they deeded it over, we've owned it, they haven't paid taxes on it, correct?
Correct, that's right.
And then when I read about trying to put a sewer pipe in on an earlier piece that we did in trying to get right-of-way and what it costs us, we have to buy right-of-way, but if we give it back, we don't get anything for it, because legally, we can't get anything for it, correct?
I'm going to defer that to our city attorney, Roger Knutson.
When we're vacating an easement, that is true.
Okay.
All we do is vacate our interest. We don't sell it.
Okay.
The difference here is we own fee title to this property.
We own clear title to this property?
Fee title.
Fee title?
Yep. So we could sell it.
So we could sell it?
Yes.
Okay. It has a value to somebody, whether it's us or not?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Member Brendel.
Director Hul, did you mention earlier that there's, that this 10-foot area is being used right now by Exo Energy and CenterPoint?
That's correct, yes, yep.
But it doesn't go to the lot south of this?
I am not sure what actual part of that, that they're utilizing. I did not get a survey back to them. It's just verbally that they said that they have facilities along the westerly property line. And then we responded back, will 10 feet be sufficient for an easement? They just came back and said yes.
Okay, so we're looking at a 30-foot piece of property here, and so what we're looking at is vacating 20 feet of that for the length of the property.
That's essentially what we're looking at, is vacating 20 feet, but actually taking care of the paperwork of the ownership to give it all back to the Norbies, and then we would take an easement over that 10 feet.
Take an easement over it. Okay, all right, thank you.
Members Sprague. Just to clarify the cost discussion, this was originally gifted to us by the adjacent homeowner, correct?
That's what I understood, yes.
Okay. And so we're just, we would be just rejoining them to their original fee. And then, secondly, this was not dedicated as part of a Porter Lane extension or some idea of joining that down?
That I don't know.
You're talking more about possibly being used in case there is another subdivision of that block?
Right, yes.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Other questions for Director Hul at this point in time? All right. Stand by. I'm sure there'll be a few more. I'm going to open this matter up for a public hearing. I'm going to ask the gentleman who was up here before to come on up and introduce yourself and give us your address, and you've got three minutes.
My name's Chris. I'm speaking on behalf of my mother, Jean Nordby, who lives 5205 Benton Avenue. And they became owners of the entire lot in approximately 1953, which was then 5201 and what now is 5205 Benton. Four years later, in '57, they wanted to split that lot and build a new home on what now is 5205 Benton Avenue. And that's when the city of Edina came in and thought they may want a for-street-use-only easement on that westerly 30 feet. And as far as we know, as soon as a year or two later, that was canceled, because no further lots that were sold shortly after had any easement of any kind on it. And as far as the maintenance, of course, we've maintained the 30 feet for about 60 years now. It had no cost to the city. As far as we knew, there was no utility placed or serviced that far over. Maybe they're thinking of future utility needs, but most of those utilities were placed right on the lot lines, both on the south end for cable and the west end for electricity. We're not aware of any that encroached into that 30 feet. But that's, other than what the engineer said, that's about it. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Nordby, would you hold on a moment, please? Would you give us your -- Miss Nordby, would you come back up, please? Would you give us your personal address as well for the record?
Well, I live in Bloomington, so I'm not a resident.
Yeah, but we need your address for the record.
7051 West 110th Street Circle in Bloomington.
Thank you. Now, let me ask you one other question, just to confirm what Member Sprague thought was accurate. Your parents donated that property to the city as part of the deal that was made to readjust the lot line?
Well, no, it was requested by the city.
Did they get compensated in any way by the city?
And there was a quick claim deed registered that the city said they would only use it for street purposes only.
Did you receive, did your mom and dad receive any compensation of any kind from the city?
$1.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, I'm going to ask for more testimony. Yes, sir, come on up.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Ray Bearhold. My wife Sally and I are residents at 5904 Code, so we are neighbors of Mrs. Nordby. I just want to say we support the vacation of the easement and vouch for the fact that the Norbies have maintained that easement, paid for mowing it, paid for all upkeep of it at no expense to the city. Thank you.
All right, good. Thanks, Mr. Bearhold. Anyone else? Seeing no one coming forward and hearing nothing, is there a motion to close the public hearing? You got a motion and a second to close the public hearing discussion? All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. Do we have a motion regarding this matter?
So moved.
All right, you're moving the adoption of Resolution 2013-12?
I am.
All right. I'll second.
You're second. This is regarding property ownership reassignment. Mrs. Nordby, you ready for this? All right. Any further discussion?
No, other than I don't see any possible pedestrian or bike adjacencies or plans around -- I mean, I can't even fathom any in that intra-city block. So I feel comfortable moving on this now, even without that plan, but it would be good to see that plan.
You're not going to charge some of the dollars that they already got?
Although, Member Sprague, to be clear, you do contemplate a sidewalk along Benton Avenue at some point in the near rather than distant future, do you not?
Right.
Meaning that within the city's right-of-way that extends from the center of Benton Avenue, it will most likely, there will most likely be a sidewalk built. Thank you.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carried. Mrs. Nordby, thanks for taking care of this property so well all these years, and your late husband as well. Thank you. You've got it back. And I bet Mr. Bearhold will help you take care of it. All right.
Maybe I should give some of my property away for someone to take care of for a while and then get it back.
We're going to move on to the community comment portion of the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to come forward and address the council with a concern that wasn't on the agenda this evening? Mr. McGrath, coming back up.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Lee McGrath. I live at 4619 Moreland Avenue here in Edina, and during the day, I am the executive director of the Minnesota chapter of the Institute for Justice. One of the things that we do at the Institute for Justice is engage government officials on the issue of civil forfeiture. And what I'd like to do tonight is talk to you about the use of civil forfeiture in the state of Minnesota and in Edina in particular, and ultimately request that you investigate how civil forfeiture is actually being used here in Edina. Today's civil forfeiture is the biggest issue in the nation, challenging individual property rights. In the state of Minnesota, each year...
McGrath, would you hold that thought for a moment? Would you get the light system functioning properly? Put them on a green light, and it will start, it'll be like you're starting afresh.
Would you like me to start anew?
And I don't need to have you start over, but just pick up right where you left off, and you've got a full three minutes.
Well, thank you so much. Civil forfeiture is the biggest issue, one of the biggest issues facing properties here in the, property rights here in the state of Minnesota. Every year, approximately $7 million is seized and forfeited by Minnesota law enforcement, and there is no need for a requirement in many of, a requirement of conviction in many of the cases that forfeit, in which property is seized. There are approximately 4,000 seizures taking place across the state every year. Here in Edina, in 2011, there were 37 seizures of property totaling a value of $161,000. Now, one of the truly unfortunate things about Minnesota law is that the legislature has delegated to law enforcement both prosecutors and police officers the authority to keep 70% and 20%, 70% going to supplement the budgets of police officers and 20% going to supplement the budgets of prosecutors. And so the legislature has created a system of eat what you kill policing for profit, speeding tickets on steroids. The situation in Minnesota, in addition to the not, the absence of a requirement of conviction on some cases, there is also, the Minnesota Supreme Court has ended any meaningful innocent owner defense for spouses. And the mayor and city members may be, city council members may be familiar with the dilemma that Kristen Brown faced a couple of years ago, given that her vehicle was seized and she had to wait a number, eight months before a court date where the judge immediately turned around and took the vehicle back from the city and gave it to Ms. Brown. What I would ask the city council to do is investigate how these funds that are currently being used to supplement the city's police budget are being used, because I wonder if they are going to sound investments, or are they potentially being used for unsound investments? Although the number of 161 was the total, thousand was the total amount of the seizures, law enforcement here, including the prosecutors that you use as third parties, kept 27,000... law enforcement here, including the prosecutors that you use as third parties, kept $27,000. I think it would be good for the city council members to learn, what did that $27,000 go to?
So, Mr. McGrath, I'm sorry I have to cut you off again, but let you drift over a little bit. I know that you've got written submissions for the legislature. And if you have anything you want us to look at as a council, any legal memorandum, please feel free to send it in.
I certainly will. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We're going to move on to the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda. First matter in front of us tonight in that portion of the agenda is the Resolution 2013-14, accepting various donations.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to accept these donations. We have to do this, it's required by law. If people want to give us a donation, we still have to accept it according to Minnesota statutes. So we got a motion and a second discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. Donations this reporting period, and these names will be on the website shortly. Donation to the Edina Art Center, some equipment going to them. The Bremar Memorial Fund for future golf course equipment purchases. Edina Fire Department got a very nice gift from Dow Chemical, only one of $3,000. And the Edina Police Department, the Crime Fund, for the police department's annual canine expenses. And Member Brindle is a member of the Crime Fund. Contribution or donation of $13,824.71. So thank you to the Crime Fund. All right. Next matter on-
I could just expand on that for a second.
Yes, Member Brindle, go ahead, please do.
And just, I mean, you look at that and say, how can a dog cost that much for a year? There are two dogs, but what's in that is everything that the dog needs for the year. And that's veterinary, that's food, that's a variety of things. But it's also a lot of training for the officer partners as well as for the dogs. They continually go through training. And we've got some wonderful, wonderful canine teams. So that's what that supports.
Good. Thank you very much. Next, we've got a couple of matters involving our new park and rec. director, Ann Katry. The first matter is the Edina Swim Club residency requirement matter. And she's going to address that with a proposed recommended course of action.
Mayor Hovland, members of the council. I'm here tonight to discuss with you the residency percentage requirement for the Edina Swim Club. I'm requesting that that residency percentage be lowered from 75% to 60%. As you recall, at the December 20, 2011 city council meeting, the city council reaffirmed the Edina Swim Club as the preferred youth sports organization, having primary access to city-owned facilities, and directed staff to draft and edit relational document and priority aquatic use facility policy with a 75% requirement. At the May 1, 2012 city council meeting, Director Keprios presented the proposed priority use aquatic center facility policy in a relationship document that reflected that 75% percentage. And that was passed by city council. In December of 2012, I was approached by the Edina Swim Club, who expressed concern that they were not currently meeting that 75% requirement. And we discussed where they were and where they felt that they would be in the future. And we agreed on a 60% residency requirement. And I have with me tonight some members of the Edina Swim Club board, most specifically Sid Persjak, who is the board president, and Brad Gray, who's the vice president, and Jeff Rodriguez, who is the head coach of the Edina Swim Club. And they would like to make a brief presentation for you tonight to discuss their residency percentages, where they are, and why they are where they are. If you'd be willing to allow their presentation.
I'm not sure that we will be.
Okay.
And here's why. You know, I think that we know from past experience in discussing this matter and affirming the Edina Swim Club as the youth sports organization having primary access to city-owned swimming facilities, that we got input from both interested parties. And what concerns me a little bit tonight is that if the swim club is going to be allowed to make a presentation as to why the percentage ought to be lowered from what we required at 75% to 60%, Aquajets is going to be foreclosed from having any opportunity to speak as to why they would like to maintain the status quo or have some other kind of input on this issue. So if we're going to discuss this matter, I think we ought to set it up in a way where there's advance notice, maybe two weeks from now, and give both sides a chance. These are the only two interested parties, but I think it's going to be important for them both to be able to speak. Now, the swim club is prepared for this tonight, and AquaJets are not prepared. I know from receiving some last-minute emails from people that are involved in that program, they didn't know this was on the agenda tonight. So I would suggest that if we're going to hear from the swim club, that we hear from the AquaJets as well, and that's the fairest way to do it, I think. Member Sprague?
I was just going to say, I'm comfortable hearing the staff presentation and making a decision on the merits.
Yeah. I mean, that's the alternative, is that we only hear from you. I'm prepared to do that, too.
Sure.
But if you really want the swim club to-
We've received their submissions, so we do have something in writing. We're not operating in a vacuum. That was part of your correspondence.
Member Swenson?
I'm perfectly comfortable hearing from Ann and making a decision. I don't think that, at this point, that we ask other people to come up and talk on one side. You know, we're either going to support it or we're not going to support it. And if we don't support it, then it allows an opportunity to discuss, then what are we going to do? If we don't recognize the Edina Swim Club. I do have a question for you, some more information that I would like, though. And one of that is, I know that as we study the Edinburgh Pool and how do we pay for Edinburgh as a complex, that the swim club did do something. Could you explain to me exactly what they committed to do and what their financial commitment to us is? Because that happened after the last time that we talked about.
Yes, Member Swenson, thank you for the question. The Edina Swim Club has committed to an annual pool rental fee of $53,000 a year. Prior to the recent agreement, they were committed to approximately $10,000 to $12,000 a year.
And this is just at Edinburgh, correct?
This is just at Edinburgh, that's correct. They've made a substantial financial commitment in pool rental time.
Okay. So, Member Brindle, and then manager-
Senator, I think if that is the direction from the council, I think we're comfortable giving you an explanation of the impact of this particular action on the city and on the facilities. We're just not going to be able to offer you kind of the first-person explanation of why they can't make the threshold. And if you're interested in that kind of explanation, we have to rely on the swim club to give that to. But if you want to just discuss the issue in terms of what its impact is on our operations, I think Ms. Katry's capable of doing that presentation tonight.
I think we got in the correspondence why they can't. So I think-
Member Brindle, did you have something you wanted to comment on?
I just wanted to broaden the amount of business, if you will, that we do with the Edina Swim Club. So it's $53,000 a year, this being the first year of that agreement, correct?
At Edinburgh Park.
At Edinburgh Park.
Right.
And in the broader scope, the total amount of rental use of rental of the pools and what they, it's the Cornelia Pool, and what else do they rent?
They rent the Self Field Middle School and the Aquatic Center. And their total pool rental in the entire city is $126,000 a year.
Okay. Do we have any other swimming organizations not named? I'm not interested in naming them, that come close to renting that amount of time and hours?
No, there are not.
Okay, thanks.
All right. If you're comfortable proceeding under the conditions that we talked about, please proceed.
Certainly. The Edina Swim Club, under age 12 years old, is 85% Edina residents. When the age reaches 14, that percentage drops slightly. And when the kids get over 14, is when the competitive nature of the swim club really kicks in. The Edina Swim Club is a very competitive swim club on a national level, and there aren't enough competitive swimmers in Edina to make up that competitive level of a swim team. The other more unique nature of the Edina Swim Club, as compared to the rest of our athletic associations, is that they have full-time professional staff, coaches, and administrators that they're paying. And that's significantly different than our majority of the rest of our athletic associations, that we have the 90% requirement. So those would be, those would be the main differences that I would highlight.
Member Sprague?
So what has changed in your understanding of the percentage floor that has to be met? From last year, when we had this in-depth discussion, we had a 15-page brief submitted by the Edina Swim Club, and 75% was noted there. It was noted as, they roughly made that, but if they, there was a footnote, if they counted, I have it somewhere here, if they counted other, does not currently track swimmers who open and roll into Edina public schools, attend private schools, or are homeschooled, all of which have tracked, would presumably increase the swim club's Edina residency percentage. So what's changed between last year, your understanding as a department, because you came forward with that number in consultation with them, and now?
Right. Member Sprague, that question would be a little bit easier to answer from the swim club's perspective, and that was one of the things that they were wanting to present to you tonight. From my perspective and my understanding of the situation, their record-keeping has improved significantly. Their numbers vacillate based on the time of the year when we are recording those numbers. And also, there have been some other swim clubs in the area, two that I'm aware of, that have closed down. And all of those high-level swimmers are seeking other swim clubs to join. So I think it's a combination of many factors. In asking that very specific question of the swim club, they were quite honest with me in saying that when we discussed this last year, they weren't quite sure exactly what the residency percentage was at the time. Right now, their overall swim club residency percentage as Edina residents is about 71%. So it is very close. They are hoping that with the expanded hours at Edinburgh Park, they're going to continue to improve that feeder program, which, as I mentioned earlier, is about 85% Edina residents. And that program is just going to take a little bit of time to develop. They're also working with Community Ed on some marketing to try to get some of their learn-to-swim kids interested in the Edina Swim Club. So I think that there are a variety of factors that were associated with, you know, why we're back in front of you a year ago, having them falling just short of that 75%. The Edina Swim Club is hoping that that 75% is not going to limit their ability to attract those high-quality swimmers and to continue to compete, both in regional competitions and national competitions. They want to make their swim club as successful as they possibly can and not have that residency percentage limit them.
And in terms of the substance of the situation, how many hours are we talking about that hang in the balance here?
Right now, the Edina Swim Club is using hours at the Aquatic Center from 6:00 a.m. until 9:30 a.m. And the AquaJets are using the hours from 9:30 a.m. until 11:00 or 11:30. So we're talking about an approximate two-hour-per-day time conflict at the Aquatic Center.
So two hours would go back into, what would happen if we were not to approve this? What would happen to the two-hour allocation?
I would leave that up to our Aquatic Center manager, but my recommendation would be to just maintain status quo, to have the swim club maintain the hours that they've had for many years and have the AquaJets maintain the hours that they've also had for many years.
So it'd roll back to the way it was?
Correct. The way it has been.
The way it has been.
The way it is.
The way it is.
Oh, right, because we did not, had not notified in time. Okay.
Correct.
And then the third question is, what's our, for the residency requirement and determining whether the association meets the center priority policy, when are the measurements taken and what is the method?
We will be taking those measurements once a year when we receive all of the documentation from our athletic associations that we receive. I would anticipate that happening at the end of the year, probably in December. We will receive the financial statements from our athletic associations and our participant numbers as well.
So end of December for decisions for the following year? And is membership, I understand their membership fluctuates and people drop on and off. Is it an average of the year, the year's membership numbers, or how is it calculated?
You know, quite honestly, Member Sprague, that is something that we're going to have to look at because it is a very complicated situation for the swim club. Depending upon the season, their numbers fluctuate significantly. So I would recommend an average throughout the year would be a fair number.
That's what I, so they would just add up, whether someone comes and goes? If they come back, then they enroll again, and that goes into the pool being counted? And then you take the average of that?
Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Member Bennett?
Thank you. Director Katry, I have a couple of questions. First of all, is there, and you, excuse me if you've already answered this, is there a group in the city that's serving an older swimmer? I know that there are some warm water classes offered at Edinburgh and the Y. Is there any kind of master swimming that's being offered by any group?
Member Bennett, the Edina Swim Club is offering a master swim program as well.
And is that counted in these participation numbers that we're hearing?
You know, it is not. The master swim numbers for the swim club right now are approximately 50/50, Edina residents and non-residents. But for the 75% residency requirement, it is for youth associations, so those master numbers are not included.
Okay. And is there any other group that's offering that type of program, again?
Member Bennett, not that I'm aware of. I know that the Y is offering some programs, but there aren't any others in Edina that I'm currently aware of.
Thank you. And if the council makes the decision to adjust this resident-participant percentage, what would that decision change, other than that number?
The major impact would be the priority use at the Aquatic Center this summer. And quite honestly, Member Bennett, that would be the only change that I would envision with this. It would grant the Edina Swim Club priority use at the Aquatic Center. And I know that the Edina Swim Club is interested in that full morning from 5:30 until 11:30.
Is that something that staff would still have control or discretion over? Or how would those hours be allocated?
Member Bennett, yes, staff would certainly have, would have the discretion on how to rent. But according to the policy, the Edina Swim Club would have first right of refusal for those hours.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Member Brindle, anything?
No. I don't hear anymore.
No. I support changing the residency requirement to 60%, so I'll make a motion stating that.
Second?
Sir, second? We got a motion and a second discussion. I've got a question for you. If we leave the threshold requirement at 75%, as Member Sprague discussed, that would allow maintenance of the status quo, which would mean that the AquaJets would continue to have that one-and-a-half to two-hour block that they've got right now. one-and-a-half to two-hour block that they've got right now in the morning.
Mayor Hovland, yes, that is correct.
Otherwise, if we change it, then the swim club would assume those hours.
Yes, that is correct.
And how many, how many Edina residents are on the Aqua Jet team that could be affected by that change in the threshold membership requirement? Do you know?
I'm sorry, Mayor Hovland, I do not have the Aqua Jets residency percentages. I know in the documentation that was received last year, it was stated that they were at approximately 25% Edina residents, but the particular number was not, was not mentioned.
Okay. All right. But to the extent we left things as is, maintaining the status quo, there would be Edina residents on the Aqua Jet team that would be able to continue to swim, even though we don't know what that number is. Is that correct?
Yes, Mayor Hovland, that is correct.
And what were there, 100, 100 non-Edina residents on the swim club team? Do you know?
334, 228, so it's just over 100.
Just over 100 non-residents.
106, maybe, yeah.
Other questions? Members Sprague?
Are we at discussion?
We are.
Okay. I support the Edina Swim Club wholeheartedly and their mission, but I don't support this proposal. I think the timing, coming after they've, they've just recently measured their residence, residency, and then, and then coming back to us in last minute trying to change it, that seems to me very inequitable. It doesn't seem like a good process to me. Doesn't seem like it was, it was good planning. And I think a better, a better decision for us would be to leave the status quo until next year. Let them come back with viable long-term numbers, which is what we asked for, by the way, a year ago, and what staff recommended just a year ago, through this whole brouhaha. And then, and then go forward on that basis so we don't have to revisit this again in the future. 60% is, when we look at our, the world of our athletic associations and trying to have a significant amount of residents, youth served by these associations, that's the whole premise of this, this youth system and giving this hometown advantage. So if we leave the percentage higher, it incentivizes the organizations to try to seek out more residents. When we keep dropping it, it de-incentivizes them to do that. That's the part that I don't like about this. Now, there might be a certain reality about the swimming sport that needs to be considered as well, but I would appreciate more of a long-term thoughtful discussion than a last-minute revision. It just seems very inequitable.
May I ask Councilmember Sprague just a clarifying question? Do you mean to say then that you don't, you don't support the reduction in the residency requirement, but you also don't, you're not asking us to inflict any negative consequences on the swim club at this time regarding how much pool time we'll rent to them in the upcoming summer?
No, I would say that our policy says you have to meet a residency requirement at a certain time to get the priority access.
Okay.
That's the rule. And if you don't meet that rule by whatever the annual date is, then you don't get the priority access, and it goes back to status quo, which is how it already exists. Then going forward, next, next year, next December or whatever, I'm sorry, before December, mid-year, whatever, when we're going through this, this, this policy again, we have to revisit the policy and come up with a long-term number that will suit the swimming association for the long term.
Okay.
It's the timing of it that seems inequitable to me.
Member Swanson?
I understand that you don't like the timing of it, but we've had a restaurant that didn't meet their bar and liquor, and we gave them a work-back as to how they could come back and not lose their liquor license and their ability to serve in Edina on an immediate basis. To me, this is very similar to that, and we never set up a work-back if it didn't work. I'm a Minneapolis resident who had two kids in the Edina Swim Club while I lived in Minneapolis for three, four years before I chose to move to Edina. One of the reasons I chose to move to Edina, having Minneapolis swimmers, was because I thought the swim club was great and the people I met in the community that lived in Edina were great, and therefore I chose this community. So I guess, though I'm rather close to the situation, I understand swimming probably better than almost everyone in this room, except for the coaches that I see sitting out here that I've known on deck for years. I still think giving a swim club a priority and only one is an important thing. I think we did the right thing a year ago. I think we didn't have the percentage right for the sport and how it exists today. So I still support having one swim club, and I think it's confusing if we don't support the change now because we've given them priority access at Edinburgh. And where does that leave us with that? I know the school district gives them priority access. It's a very complicated, expensive sport to run and to schedule. And I think it's really important that we continue with our support for them, and that's why I made the motion to lower to 60%.
And again, just to respond, I would, I would support this. And if this is the long-term percentage that needs to happen for this association to be viable, I would entertain that discussion for the following year. But here, here we are again. They had a chance last year to set a percentage that was viable. We went forward, we measured, then they didn't make it, and now we're just retroactively trying to go back and undo that. That just seems inequitable to me and not a good practice for the future.
Member Bennett.
I directed a small nonprofit where we were supposed to be keeping track of hours that volunteers served in order to qualify for and maintain a grant. And when I assumed directorship of that organization, I found that different standards of record-keeping, different ways of record-keeping have resulted in a pretty difficult situation. And I worked very hard to pull those records together and get an accurate picture of participation. I think that's what's been done here. It's no disrespect at all to previous leadership, but when you have successions of leadership, it's very hard to have that institutional continuity. And I appreciate the efforts that have been done here, to be very specific about the ages at which people are participating, what's known at this time about the reasons why people are making different decisions. I happen to have a neighbor whose child was featured recently in The Sun Current as now a wrestler, was a swimmer. So I know that there are, this is a time of life when people are choosing new sports. And I appreciate also the efforts that the Edina Swim Club is making to increase its presence in the community, increase its convenience to Edina families by having the regular hours at Edinburgh. I think it's been a very good relationship for the city and has allowed us to keep that facility open and serving other residents at other times of day as well. So I will support this motion. I think it, I think it is reasonable. I look forward to more diligence in their record-keeping and also in their attracting new Edina families and retaining Edina families, which I think are efforts that they are already engaged in. And I look forward to hearing about more success from them on that.
Member Bindel?
I'm okay. I'm fine. I'm in support of it.
Okay. The swim club's been around for over 50 years, and we've just had a tremendous relationship with the city. I really appreciated them stepping up to the plate on Edinburgh. And it worked out to be a nice fit for them as well as, as well as a nice piece of revenue for us to help maintain that facility over there. But as Member Sprague has stated, I think very articulately, something about this just doesn't feel right to me. It was only nine months ago that we, that we went through a real, complete process with a lot of input, real balanced input from, from the Aqua Jets and the swim club. We were able to make a real, well-reasoned decision at that point in time. And I don't feel that same way this time. And I think the swim club has been probably functioning pretty well under the status quo. And so I'm going to vote with Member Sprague in opposition to this change in the residency requirement because I think when we go to address this matter in the future, we need to have good input from both sides here. I wish we had more capacity so we didn't have this issue coming up. But I don't want to worry about kids from Edina that might be on the Aqua Jets team that are going to be foreclosed from the swimming opportunities they have by virtue of us changing this policy only nine months after we put it in place in the first place. And that, that's, that's not a criticism, as Member Bennett says, of, of the swim club. I appreciate their candor and their honesty in coming forward and talking about this issue. But to me, we just don't have a complete record to make a decision on. And so I'm going to, I'm going to vote against changing the residency requirement. All right. We got full vetting of, I think, this issue. All those in favor of the action request, which is to change the Edina Swim Club's current 75% residency requirement to 60%, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Nay. Carried.
Thank you.
Next matter we have is, you wanted to visit with us, Member, Director Cotry, about the Countryside Park renovation. And it's nice to be coming up with a plan, finally. And thanks in large part to the, the fee being paid by the Waters Development. So we're eager to hear what you have to say about this.
Thank you very much, Mayor Hovland, members of the council. Tonight, I am before you requesting to authorize staff to seek bids for the Countryside Park master plan renovation. This plan started in 2008 with significant neighborhood involvement. We surveyed at the time over 1,000 residents in the neighborhood to find out what they wanted in their parks. And we have been working with them continually through this process. As Mayor Hovland mentioned, the addition of the Waters Development and the park dedication fee that they paid to us last summer has given us the opportunity of completing our entire master plan. We had $330,000 in our capital improvement plan budget for last year. Then with the addition of the $695,000 from the Waters Development, it puts us at $1,025,000, which will give us the significant resources available to complete our master plan project. So tonight, I have some guests in the audience from Hoyzington Kogler, who is our landscape architect that's been working with us on this project for the last five years. And I also have two members from SGN Wendell, who is the architect firm that has worked with us on the park shelter building plan. So I would like to bring them forward to go through a presentation of the process that we've used to get to this point and also show you the plans that we're looking at right now.
All right. Let's do that.
So I have first Gabrielle Grundy, who is from Hoyzington Kogler, and Jill Bills from SGN Wendell.
Hello. This presentation just goes over the master plan as it is currently. We are almost to the-
I'm going to interrupt you for just a moment. While Director Cotry has introduced you, I'd like to have you introduce yourself and identify who you work for and what your business address is.
Okay. I'm Gabrielle Grundy. I'm a landscape architect with Hoyzington Kogler Group, and we're located at 123 North Third Street in Minneapolis.
Thank you.
This slide shows the master plan that was approved in 2008. This was worked on by members of my firm with John Kaprios to come up with this master plan for improvements for Countryside Park. And when I started working on this park master plan almost a year ago, there were many elements that helped it evolve. We had several meetings with city staff and neighborhood groups to discuss the park needs and desires. Neighborhood members were involved with the playground vendor selection and the playground equipment selection. We met with the baseball association to determine the field amenities that were needed. We also met with the Waters developer to determine needs and desires for the new residents adjacent to the park. And we had multiple meetings with staff and public works to analyze the park constraints and needs. The current master plan is shown in this illustrative graphic. The baseball field, the larger baseball field on the west will be renovated to include dugouts, bullpens, and fencing to match the Little League field on the east side of the park. The basketball court will be moved to where the current playground is right now on the east side of the park. The tennis courts will remain as they're shown. One of the desires of the residents in the neighborhood was that hockey would be brought back to this park. Hockey is currently located, or was located where number 10 is shown, but it will be moved to a north-south orientation, which is desired by the maintenance staff and shown in number 5 on the plan. Number 10 will now be the free skate area. And then number 6 is where the new playground will go. And the playground is moved to this location so that it is now accessible from the parking lot on the west side of the park, which is, I've heard rarely used by actual park users. It's used more by Colonial Church to the east of, the west of the park. Number 11 is, shows the entire north-south area of the wooded zone. And we have already completed a buckthorn clearing by the Minnesota Conservation Corps here. And they'll be back in the spring to remove more invasive species so that the sightlines from the parking lot to the park will be improved. Number 7 is the location of the new park shelter, which will be located close to the playground, close to the parking lot, and will be in a nice orientation for the free skate and then to the hockey as well. And then there will be a circular trail accessible around the park, cutting through the middle of the park, but then going along the woods on the west side and connecting to the Waters Development across Colonial Way. This is a section showing what the baseball area will look like. The new prep field is shown on the left side of the drawing. There will be bleachers placed right behind the new backstop fence. And then the trail will be behind the bleachers with a short retaining wall which can be used for spectator seating. And then this shows a section of the new playground. The playground will be entirely poured-in-place surface, and it will be entirely accessible equipment for ADA requirements. And then there will also be a seat wall on the backside of the playground which will butt up to the existing hill in the park. This is an image showing the approved playground equipment that I understand has already been purchased by the city. This is the accessible equipment, and the poured-in-place surface is shown below. This is a cost estimate summary of the project at this point. I believe you have a more detailed cost estimate in your packets. But this shows that we are on budget according to our estimates.
I'm Jill Bills with SGN Wendell, and I'm going to talk about the building plan. The plan is very similar to a few other park buildings you guys currently have. There are restrooms that are accessible from both the outside and from the interior of the space, a mechanical room, a small office storage area, and then a large gray room. The roof structure extends to the north for a shaded viewing area towards the playground. All the exterior will be masonry, so it'll be very durable, and there'll be little to no long-term maintenance. These are the other exterior elevations. We have a couple of built-in benches at the outside. And we have a couple of 3D views and interior shots. We're going to have in-floor heat. We have windows that are going to allow a lot of daylight into the space, so the hope is that the lights will rarely be on during the day. There are views towards the playground and towards the hockey area as well. Any questions?
Questions? Member Bindel?
Regarding the play area, poured-in-place surface, what is it made of? And a couple- And a couple of questions about that. First of all, what's it made of?
It's mostly made from recycled tires.
So it's rubber?
Yes.
How thick is it?
It's approximately four inches thick.
All right. And the life expectancy of that with summers and winters?
I believe it was fifty years, but our playground vendor has that information.
Fifty, like five-oh?
Yes.
Really? All right, great, thank you.
Members, break.
Thank you. Very thoughtful design in the park shelter. We were just commenting here, the windows look out to the skating rink, you've got sheltered benches on the nurse side, which is a feature not found in any other park shelters. Do we have? No, we don't. This is the first time. Do you know the approximate length of the, of the trail, the loop?
It's about a third of a mile.
One-third, so three laps for a mile.
You're going to be running that to get your-
That's a lot of laps for what I need to do, but, okay. That's all, that's all the questions I had, thanks.
Good. Member Brindle, go ahead.
Director Katry and I talked today about accessibility, accessible, how accessible the play equipment is going to be. You mentioned something about a two-level area there, so if you would tell everybody about that.
Yes, Member Brindle, thank you. I am very appreciative to the Countryside Neighborhood Association. They spent hours and hours and many meetings with me going over plans and actually touring landscape structures planned and visiting other competing vendors as well. And what came out loud and clear from our neighborhood was that they wanted to make sure that they were providing an accessible structure. And they wanted the structure to be accessible both from a safety surface perception and also from the, the perspective of the structure itself. And the, the structure, as you saw, is a two-level structure that is accessible both on the upper level, and then there is a variety of play equipment on the lower level, too, that will be accessible for people in wheelchairs. So I'm, I'm very proud of the design that the neighborhood favored and think that it's going to be very popular in our park system.
Can we bring that picture back up? Because when we're looking at it, did we have a picture of it?
Mm-hmm.
Be, when we're looking at it, you know, you see it, and now that you get a description of it, maybe people will see more in it, that it is accessible on that lower area with a variety of things that a, a child in a, in a chair or, or not able to climb, for example, would be able to be active.
Yes, Member Brindle, that's correct. I'm, I'm hoping that this is going to be the new standard in our park system.
Member Swenson.
Two questions. Is it a castle that's there currently now, or some sort of fortress kind of thing? Do we have a plan for where that's going yet?
We are, we're hoping to donate that structure to an organization that ships the play structures overseas.
I've read about that. That would be great.
We're going to be working on it.
And then could you give me the timeline for this project so that if anyone who isn't involved with picking it out or lives in the neighborhood wants to know, when is it going to start and when do you think it's going to be done?
Yes, Member Swenson, thank you very much. We're hoping to start the, the bidding process within the next month to two months. We're very close to having our design documents completed, and construction will start early spring, and we hope to have everything completed by October.
With regard to the accessibility issue, when I think about the new assisted living facility going up next to Colonial Church and some of those folks that may want to be able to walk over, assisted or unassisted, and use that walkway, have, have you created a, access for them to the trail so that it'll be easier for them to get around? Not only for them, but for anybody from the neighborhood as well?
Yes, number twelve on this plan here shows where we'll have a trail that will have a curb cut to the street, and then, I'm not quite sure, but I'm hoping that the Waters will have a curb cut as well, and then we can have the city stripe that area as a mid-block crossing. The road there is not very busy, so we think that's a good place for a crossing. And then accessibility to the neighborhood, there's currently a sidewalk access at the northeast corner of the park, which will tie into the trail spur in the middle-north part of the park. So those will both be accessible, trail entries.
So it's, I don't remember there being a sidewalk along that northerly edge of the park. It's across the street, correct? Or is it on this side?
It's on this side. It looks like it's on this side.
Okay. Okay, so that line is a sidewalk that I can see that ties in in two different places, correct? Okay, perfect, thank you.
You know, with the new ball field going in there at item two, or number two, in the original ball field at number one, where would people be able to, to sit or stand and watch a game in, in either field without too much risk of danger for them getting hit with a fall ball? What are your thoughts there?
Well, currently, the backstop fence, I believe, is sixteen feet high, and we're raising that to twenty-five feet. And there will be, you know, when games are going on, people will be aware of that as they're walking along the trail, so they'll be able to watch out for balls hitting them. As far as seating, there is seating currently on the berm between both of the fields, and there are bleachers there, so we're just moving the bleachers from the top of the berm for the new field to right behind the backstop, so that people on the trail won't be in front of the people on the bleachers.
Yeah, good. Is there, is there an elevation change over by number eleven? You know, the trail goes along the west side of field number two, and then you've got that buckthorn clearing going on there. Is, is that part of that embankment that also is shown along Olinger? You know, that, that banks up so that the church isn't invisible from Olinger? Or is that fairly level through there?
No, eleven is pretty level-
Is it?
-through the trees there. And I met with the city forester, and we discussed locating that trail in the field so that we can save as many trees as possible.
Sure, okay. All right. It struck me that if there was sort of a natural elevation there, that you got almost developed kind of a hillside for people to just sit on if the, if the landscaping were such that it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a good place to sit. But it doesn't look like that's the way the elevation runs over there, so.
Mayor Hovland, actually, with the, with the buckthorn removal in this area of the park, the, the change is dramatic, and we are actually going to be expanding the field slightly into what you would have noticed as the woods previously. So we're going to be reclaiming some, some very usable space by doing that buckthorn removal.
Okay, good, thank you. Member Swenson.
The only other thing I have to say is, having watched baseball being played there by second graders, which is, you know, like watching paint dry, though I love him dearly, it gets really hot, so any trees that we can preserve along there or replant if we have to take one out, that, some people sit in the bleachers. The majority tried to find a place on that hill underneath a tree, and they bring a blanket. So it would be really great to have as many trees that could grow into shade trees for, for baseball viewing in the future.
Thank you, Member Swenson, and our landscape architects have thought of that, and we will be, we will be planting those trees.
Great, thank you. Get them to grow fast, will you?
All right, good. Gabrielle and Jill, thank you. And do we have a motion on this matter?
So moved?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to authorize bids for the Countryside Park renovation. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. And correspondence and petitions, anything other than what's on the diocese evening? Okay, thank you. Mayor and council comments, Member Brindle. I think we're starting with you this week.
All right, thank you. What have I been doing? I, I have heard from a couple of residents who have experienced construction in adjacent properties, that they are experiencing standing water in their backyards. So I think if it is, I see Community Director Teague is not here right now, but if we can stress maybe in the construction management plan, somehow, to be able to make property owners who are undergoing construction, owners of property that is being reconstructed or remodeled, because sometimes that owner is a builder, but just to stress the need to consider the trajectory of water and where it's going to sit. In one situation, the, the resident I was speaking with loves her neighbor and didn't want to cause trouble, so she didn't say anything. And so I think that, that we may need to ease that conversation a little bit, just to kind of get it started in order to protect both the property owner that is undergoing the improvement, as well as the property owner that is next door. Then recently, on January seventeenth, I attended the meeting of the Edina Chemical Health Partners, and Kathy Iverson runs a good meeting, and we met at Normandale Church, and meeting attendance included school liaison officer Brian Hubbard, Edina Schools Chemical Health Coordinator Janet Schenk, representatives from several parent groups, and Darren Erickson, who is a researcher from the University of Minnesota Department of Epidemiology, Alcohol Division. He was there to talk about the sixty-forty ratio and talk about what communities are experiencing with different ratios, such as sixty-forty or fifty-fifty. And when we talk specifically about restaurants, as the Edina model of, we don't have a bar, we have a restaurant that serves alcohol and has an area that you might call a bar. But in, in cases where the availability of alcohol is limited, and I say that because he considers the availability of alcohol to be limited in Edina because it's expensive. In the, in the restaurant atmosphere, alcohol commands a higher price than it does in a bar, in a typical bar that you might find in a, in another city. So he was talking about availability having to do with promotions and pricing, and, and he did not feel that the, the restaurant atmosphere caused any unexplainable increase in alcohol consumption. And Brian Hubbard, the officer, didn't find that there were any big problems with, with alcohol consumption and the results of alcohol consumption at Fiftieth and France. They really haven't had any, anything to deal with, with, with happy hour, with people drinking too much, with people just hanging around aimlessly and loitering. They haven't had that in, in Edina. So, but I, I thought the comments from Darren Erickson were interesting. There's a lot that he talked about, and I have some details on that. So I can certainly put together a report on that, because I think in our consideration of that ratio, I think the, the main points of his discussion will be important to know.
Yeah, I think so. Thank you. Member Bennett.
Thank you. We did have a couple of pieces of correspondence that I have a question or two about. One was from a resident who sent us photographs of recycling that was not picked up. I noted it was not in the new wheeled bins. Are peop, is recycling still being picked up if it's not in the wheeled bin? It used to be that people with the green bin, you could set it all outside, in the green bin, outside the green bin, depending on whether it was a holiday.
I can answer this question.
Oh, good, thank you.
Because Rich Hurstein from Allied Waste was at our house this morning. No, it will not be picked up if it's outside the bin unless you call them and say, "I will have material outside the bin if you'll please pick it up," and they'll probably do that once. If it doesn't fit in the bin...
No, no, I'm-
You have a comment?
You finished.
Okay, sorry, I didn't have eyes back there. But yes, that is something that, that we are learning more and more about. But anyway, there's a process which we'll hear about now.
All I was going to say is, Councilmember Brindle and I have had that discussion before, and I'm aware of that explanation. That's not really acceptable for how we're going to run our recycling program. So we do need to have some additional discussion with the vendor and figure out some way that that service can be provided at a reasonable level. We're receiving, we're beginning to receive more questions and complaints about that particular aspect of the recycling program. We still get a lot of applause for it, but that particular aspect we need to take on.
And who do people-
Thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah, and who do people contact? I encountered a cardboard box left in the middle of the street and moved it over to the side. I wasn't going to carry it the rest of my walk with me. But who, who does the contact go to when something doesn't make it from the bin?
So they will not.
Okay, so here at City Hall.
We are centralizing those questions about the recycling program with her.
Okay. And Member Brindle, in response to your concern, I believe that we do have code on drainage. A drainage plan for new construction is supposed to be reviewed and approved by the city engineer. We did discuss this at our work session with the planning commission on September four, but we also acknowledged in that discussion, and actually, our city attorney helped us identify, that there is no standard identified in the code provision, nor any penalty identified in the code provision. So I would say that you've identified an issue that I've also heard a lot about. We had another piece of correspondence that I have some question about, and that was the letter from the General Services Administration to you, Mayor Hovland. And have, they've been put in contact with the folks at Pentagon Park?
They've been put in contact with our Economic Development Director. Our, I put, I sent that out to our Economic Development Director. I think he could comment on that when he comes up here on another matter, but here he comes now.
Okay.
Yes, I did follow up. Thank you. Bill Nudorf, Economic Development Manager with the city. I did reach out to the GSA the day after that letter came and ask them for some more detail about what exactly they're looking for, let them know that there are some sites available, including Pentagon Park. To date, I've not heard, gotten any response from them once whatsoever. So their letter was very vague as far as what their needs are, but they know that we have some good sites available, and they've got our information. And we've, I did reach out to the different development communities, and they are aware that the GSA is looking for space.
I know that years ago, when the federal government was looking for some space, and with the work ongoing in the federal building near the airport, Mayor, you and I corresponded with Jim Nelson about it. And at that time, Pentagon Park was not in the kind of condition that the federal government wanted to look at. However, I was at the same open house that Manager Neal and Director Teague and the mayor were at, the mayor spoke at, and they are doing some wonderful work there, and I think that will be a facility that will definitely be an option, a good option within our community. And finally, I would like to make a pitch for the quasquicentennial work continues. We had a person attend the meeting last Thursday who is in a book group that's existed, I think, since the nineteen-sixties or seventies, and she is going to work on a book-related event. So we're encouraging people who want to do a tie-in, there can be some publicity, and Jennifer Benarott has been working very diligently with the committee and with Marcy Matson at the Historical Society to get word out in the community. The Star Tribune also did a wonderful article on the Yancey family, and after that article was published, more volunteers have come forward to transcribe the Yancey diaries and, and correspondence. So we should have some very good excerpts for our Founder's Day program, which will be on Thursday, December twelfth, two thousand thirteen. And I won't announce this at any, every meeting, but we will have a celebration here at City Hall with an open house in the lobby, hopefully some tours at the Grange Hall and at the Cahill School, and then a brief program, no more than about an hour long, at seven o'clock that will include some vignettes read by different people in our community from the city's history.
Thanks for working on it, quasquicentennial. Appreciate it. Member Swenson.
I was just going to add to the recycling, because for our city, it's so unusual to go every other week, that I do have a concern, just like Member Brindle does, that if you miss a week, that you're really kind of in trouble. And, or if you're out of town, because, and that you miss a week, or that there's holidays, multiple ones, and then you get confused. Luckily, they do send out the little- Luckily, they do send out the little chart, but I find myself having to look at it all the time. And I don't think we want to disincentivize recycling. That wasn't our goal when we went to this multi-bucket plan. So anything we can do to make this work better would be greatly appreciated.
Member Sprague.
And did you know you can sign up for text reminders from the vendor on your phone as to when Recycling Week is? Isn't that cool? I don't know how you do it, but I did it somehow, and it tells me on my phone when it's Recycling Week. It's great. Maybe call Allied Waste and figure out how to do that, because I know everyone here has cell phones, right? Boom. We had a very nice presentation this morning at the Edina Morningside Rotary from Brian Hubbard on all the different programs that Police Department carries out, including Police Explorers, Junior Police, School Resource Officers, Safety Day, and the Polar Bear Plunge. And I would just like the volunteer, Manager Neal, and myself, if they have space on their roster, to participate in this endeavor this year.
I don't think you can volunteer someone else.
Oh, sure, I can.
No, I think there's a conflict of vocabulary.
He understands my performance review is next week, so he's...
Can I have a second?
I've been walking in this, but I wouldn't volunteer anybody to go into the water in it.
For a second. Jeez Louise. All right. Well, anyway, I'm going to try to make that happen with peer pressure. Forget you guys. I'll just do it on my own. So anyhow, it just was a great program, and to see all the different ways that the Police Department touches the community. It was a very, very nice presentation, and I'm glad I was there to view it this morning. In terms of the trash, one thing I would just like to remark in my corner of the world is, we do have a problem with storing of containers outside. I mean, I counted 15 residences out of 40 on a particular street. And because I know who some of the newer residents is, somehow, the new residents are not getting this message, that they need to store the containers inside the garage. And these are two-car garages. There's space for it, I know. They just either don't know about it or don't want to deal with it, and it doesn't look good from the street. So I think that ordinance is an important part of our quality-of-life standards in Edina that we should try to enforce.
Member Swenson.
There is some space issues, though. I had to totally relocate. I had to pull things up into my ceiling this fall, and I had to take a generator and move it outside on the patio in the back, which isn't really where I want to do it, but that is the only way I can get two cans and two cars and nothing else in my garage. So I would say that not every two-car garage is big enough, and I don't have anything extra. I don't have a bike in there anymore, I don't have anything, just to get these. And I can't buy a longer car because it will never work then, so...
So do we need to change the ordinance?
We might.
Okay. I found the container is the exact same footprint as the old one. It's just taller, so I don't understand the...
He lowered my old one over the hood of my husband's car.
Oh, that sounds like special circumstances, Member Swenson. Anyway, I think we should try to gain some education on this and some compliance. And I don't know, what is the procedure? We send the letter, and then, I've asked this before, but I'd like to renew the interest in this.
Councilmembers Sprague and councilmembers, this is one of those aspects of our city code that we do passive enforcement on. So we typically do not have a city staff person who's out inspecting the community to see if these containers are being left at the curb. However, we do address them on a complaint-by-complaint basis. If you have a sense that you'd like to change that, the method of that enforcement, we need to have some discussion about the impact of that on staffing levels, but when we do get a complaint, we do verify that complaint, and we have a letter protocol that's very similar to the protocol we use for outdoor watering complaints, where there is a series of letters that start nice and end threatening.
And what's the follow-up for compliance once the letter's gone out? I mean, you send the letter, and then how do you...
An inspection.
There'll be another inspection?
Yeah.
Okay.
9th of January, I attended the MSP Export Initiative meeting over at the Carlson School, another great meeting. I think they're going to be asking the Edina Chamber that is working on the pilot for the export initiative in a suburban environment to come and report out at the meeting this spring, so that'll be interesting as well. And then, of course, on the 9th, and then on the 10th, was the funeral for tragic death of Little Quinn Kirsch, eight-year-old in our community who had a bad heart and had a pacemaker, and he passed away. Our Lady of Grace was filled with people on the Davis Funeral on the 10th, and I've never seen so many people at a funeral. And the town, of course, was filled with green balloons. And I want to thank people in our town for being so supportive, and I want to extend on behalf of everyone in our community our deepest condolences to his parents, Kyle and Kelly Kirsch. On the 12th, I attended the, they had a One Amazing Day event over at the Weight Watchers business next to the original Pancake House, Brandon Square, and they've got 42,000 people registered over there in that Edina store that are using that in some form or fashion over the year. It's quite an amazing enrollment. And then on the 15th, Manager Neal and I had a phone conversation with our legal counsel on the flight pattern, airline flight pattern issue. Got a little guidance there, and I think Manager Neal will talk about going to the Noise Oversight Committee and expressing the opinion of our counsel and our community that we would like our own position on the Noise Oversight Committee, or the NOC as it's known, and I'll let you report on that. On the 16th, we had a TAB meeting that was well-attended. We've got some new TAB members, including John Gunnew, who was a former city manager of Minnetoka, and also now the new chair of the Three Rivers Park District. So we've got a good ally there. This last Saturday, we did a walk with the mayor at Saltdale, and then I had an email from John Gunnew saying, "Can I go on the next walk with the mayor with you in Edina so we can get to know people in Edina better?" And of course, I invited him to participate as well. Member Bennett mentioned the Pentagon Park Open House on the 16th, really well-attended event, and they've done such great work over there with what they like to call the renaissance or the rebirth of Pentagon Park. I think it's going to be a great addition to our community, and they're working on some tendencies that'll be very valuable to us. And then on the 17th, we had Southwest LRT Community Works. There continues to be stationary planning along the route, which is interesting work. And then just this past Monday morning, I had breakfast with Dick Miller, who's an Edina resident who's on the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District Board, and we talked about this Minnehaha Creek restoration project that we could do with them, that would probably start at Nutley and work its way down through 54th and Minnehaha Boulevard, on down towards Pamela Park. They are really keen to help us out on that and get neighbors involved, and so let's stay on top of that one. That could be a beautiful restoration project of the creek.
They're already working on a section just this spring, because I have friends that live along there that have signed on with their plan. So I know that south of that 54th Street...
South of 54th.
Or 56, actually, that they're working now, though not everyone along the creek signs on, unfortunately.
All right, good. So that's it for me. Manager Neal.
Thank you, Your Honor. As you mentioned, I did attend the Noise Oversight Committee meeting on January 16th. I presented the city council's resolution of November 20th requesting a dedicated community spot on the NOC Board of Directors. The group briefly considered that request and offered us an alternative, and the alternative is to be considered as part of the at-large membership on the NOC. And the at-large membership includes six other cities. They are St. Louis Park, St. Paul, Sunfish Lake, Inver Grove Heights, Burnsville, and Apple Valley. And if we accept that, and that's what they've offered us, and that's how they intend to change their bylaws at their March meeting to accommodate, we would be represented on the NOC by an Apple Valley City Council member named John Bergman. The opportunity to put somebody into that role does change on an annual basis, so Mr. Bergman, it doesn't rotate among cities, but there is a gathering of city representatives of the at-large group, and they select someone to be typically, in fact, I think always, an elected official from one of the represented cities. So that's where that lies. Earlier this, I guess yesterday, I received a call from one of the neighborhood associations in southwest Minneapolis. They are interested in forming an airport advisory committee and would like Edina to be part of that. They have, they're planning a formative meeting to discuss the details of that on February 4, and they've invited me to attend, and so I will attend and find out more details on what they're thinking about. There are a couple of upcoming meetings with legislators that council members are invited to. First is the work, well, not the first, but one is the work session on February 5, so the work session in advance of our next council meeting is a joint meeting with our legislators. Unfortunately, Senator Franzen cannot attend. She has a previous engagement, but Representatives Rosenthal and Earhart have agreed to attend. They're happy to consider questions, receive questions and comments about city issues at the legislature this year, and report on some of the bills that they are advancing as well. The other opportunity for council members is the annual MLC, Municipal Legislative Commission Legislative Breakfast, which for the West Metro is going to occur at Bremer, at the clubhouse, and it's 7:30 a.m. on Friday, February 1. And we need to RSVP for that. If you're interested, you can contact me, you can contact Karen.
The 8th to the 1st?
It did, yeah. They moved it because they had some feedback from legislators that that would be easier for them to get to. So if you want to RSVP for that, let me know, let Karen know, or Susan howl. We'll put all the RSVPs together and communicate that to them. We have talked before at council meetings about the proposal to raise the old Public Works Building. Wayne, Director Houle, has been moving that proposal forward. We plan to accept bids on that project on February 11 and advance it to the council for consideration on the 19th, and hopefully with the completion date of May 31st. The proposal would be to pay for that project out of the remaining funds in the Grandview Tiff District, which is an appropriate source of money for that project. The final item I have is just to reaffirm for the council that next week, on Tuesday, we'll have a special meeting to conduct my annual performance review. Harry Bruhl will be in town and coordinating and facilitating that review. The only thing we have left to do is to just firm up the time, and I think we're going to propose 5:00, as long as that can work in everybody's schedule.
That's what I've got.
Okay, 5:00 it is. And that's all I have.
29.
29.
Manager Neal, just so you know, in the world of contracts, silence is acceptance. And I noticed you didn't say anything about my polar plunge proposal, so therefore, I would interpret that as acceptance. So just let that state that for the record.
I am going to study the potential cardiac damages of this event and get back to you.
I have a question.
I noticed you brought it up right after you talked about his performance review.
Yeah, I noticed that as well.
And keep in mind, we'll have plenty of first responders on site to revive you, so it's not that dangerous.
Yeah.
All right, back to business. I have a question.
Yes.
Regarding the site of the old Public Works Building, once the building is gone, what do we have?
We really just have a cleared site.
Okay, so we don't have a plan?
At this time, we do not, but the belief is that it assists the city in marketing and attracting interest, redevelopment interest in the entire area, and brings some attention to that area.
Okay, so that would be the first step in doing that? The building would have to be gone?
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you.
We're currently doing some firefighting and emergency response training in there right now, the nature of which damages the building, but it's important training that we don't get to do very often just because of the nature of it.
Member Bennett.
Yes, thank you. Could we be reminded, please, of what it is that we're supposed to have on our schedule for February 12th, and at what time and where?
February 12th?
I believe it was a presentation.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, that's our...
It's here. It's in the council chambers.
And I thought it was at 7:00.
I think that's...
I think you're right.
I have it at 6:00.
Oh, at 6:00, yep.
And...
It's the new, what is it?
Their new normal presentation, so I think Kathy Bennetts is coordinating that for us?
I think so.
I believe that's right, okay.
And they've got the faculty lined up, at least some of it lined up, and it's an impressive faculty.
Yeah.
We've got some business to do for the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority, so we will adjourn the city council meeting. Unless anyone has anything further from...
Just have one more comment. You can downsize your recycling container. I've been told via email that someone watching, that there's three different sizes available at City Hall.
They're right out there.
But with recovery, with pickup only every two weeks, for most people, that isn't, I think they're finding that within those two weeks...
The small one is not adequate.
So you've got to either make room or choose a smaller one.
Mine is full, and I have six more days to go.
I see no distinction between having to call Allied and asking them to have somebody pick up the recycling that's sitting next to your bin, and actually having the guy drive by and seeing it next to your bin and having the wisdom to pick it all up. I mean, it's just something that we really need to address with Allied. I think it's outrageous that they just drive on by. They never used to drive by the green bin if there were things stacked around their bin.
But I also can tell you anecdotally, and it might vary from route to route, on my street, I have, in Christmas, we had additional recycling. They took it, and it was next to the recycling bin. So it might be the route specific.
It could be the individual driver.
It's not consistent.
It's a more automated process now than it was before, and that's part of the reason they...
I mean, we should not have to be requesting our residents to call Allied. They ought to be automatically picking it up, and we need to fix that problem. All right, anything else? Otherwise, we'll adjourn the council meeting. The council meeting stands adjourned. Now, we are convening the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority meeting, and Clerk Mangan, would you please call the meeting to order? Or, I called it to order. Getting late. Do you want to take roll?
I can do a roll. Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
Commissioner Brindle.
Here.
Commissioner Sprague.
Here.
Commissioner Swenson.
Here.
Chair Hovland.
Here. And the next matter was the approval of some minutes of the HRA, the regular meeting on June 19, 2012.
I'll move approval of them.
All right. We got a motion? We have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor of approving the minutes of June 19, 2012 for the HRA, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. Carried. Manager Neal, the next matter in front of us for discussion is Resolution 2013-01.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Which authorizes, or potentially authorizes some action on the part of the council with respect to a piece of property at 3944 West 49 and 1/2 Street.
Thank you, Your Honor. It's customary before city staff begin negotiating with the owners or representatives of real property to get a council authorization. We've had some previous discussion about this item earlier tonight in a closed session. I do have Mr. Nuenendorf, who's here tonight, to describe in detail or answer any questions that the council may have, but the action is to seek your approval for us to begin a negotiation with the property owners.
Mr. Nuenendorf, any input here? Mr. Nudorf, any input here?
Just a quick overview to complement what, what Manager Neil had mentioned. For several years now, the city and the HRA have explored parking options at 50th and France and have found that additional public parking is necessary for the district. In some preliminary conversations with some of the property owners in the area, I found a parcel that, that may be able to be purchased, acquired, to, to help reach this goal of additional public parking. We're seeking authorization tonight to have serious negotiations with the property owner to see if there might be a deal that could be reached to help the city achieve its goals as well as to achieve the goals of the property owners who are here this evening.
All right, thank you. All right, with respect to this resolution, I'd like to deal in the world of potentialities. So, I think Member Swenson has a resolution she'd like to introduce with a couple of changes.
The mayor suggested some changes which I would support, and I will make the motion, but let me give you the changes first. It's taking Resolution Number 2013-1, and after the fourth whereas, it would say, "Whereas potential acquisition of the parcel serves a public purpose." And then on the last line, it says, "Now, forever be it resolved, the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority authorized staff to enter negotiations for the potential acquisition." So, you've just put in those two words, and then I would move this.
I would second with those changes.
All right. Further discussion? All those in favor of the resolution as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, say nay. Carried. All right. Any other further business for the HRA?
That's all, sir.
Members of the HRA? No. HRA stands adjourned.
Thank you.